Good evening, everyone. I will now call to order the August 10, 2023 Clackamas County Board of Commissioners Business Meeting. County Administrator Gary Schmidt, please call the roll.
Yes, thank you Chair Smith. First, our staff support today: Clerk to the Board Tony Marinick, County Council Stephen Madcor, Commissioners West and Schrader are on their way. Roll call Commissioner Savas.
Present.
Commissioner Scholl.
Here.
Chair Smith.
Here, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you and good evening, everyone. Two Commissioners are delayed because traffic is very bad from what I hear. Martha Schrader has just arrived, thank you very much. I guess there's a backup on I-205 this evening. We are holding this meeting in person and virtually. If you've joined us via Zoom for this meeting and are interested in providing public comment, we will prompt you regarding how to do that when the time is right. General public comment will be taken at the usual allotted time. I would like to remind all participants, including staff, all elected officials, and members of the public, that Robert's Rules of Order will be enforced in this business meeting. We look forward to your opinions and welcome your polite participation. I will now recess as the Board of County Commissioners and convene as a Housing Authority of Clackamas County Board of Commissioners. Gary.
This is the Housing Authority of Clackamas County Consent Agenda. Housing Commissioner Ann Leinster is not able to join tonight, so it's just the Board. Tony, would you please read the Housing Authority Consent Agenda?
Housing Authority of Clackamas County Consent Agenda, one item: Approval to Apply for a 2040 Planning and Development Grant for Pre-Development Activities for Clackamas Heights and to Provide a Letter of Support for the Clackamas Heights Redevelopment Project. Grant value is $375,000 over two years, funding is through Metro Construction Excise Tax, no county general funds are involved.
Does any Commissioner wish to remove anything from this consent agenda? Seeing none, Tony, please call the poll.
Oh, any motion?
Oh, entertain a motion, excuse me.
I move for approval of the Housing Authority Consent Agenda.
Second, Commissioner Scholl has moved for approval of the Housing Authority Consent Agenda, and Commissioner Schrader has seconded that motion. Any further discussion now? Tony, please take the poll.
Commissioners Savas.
Aye.
Commissioner Schrader.
Aye.
Commissioner Scholl.
Aye.
Chair Smith.
Aye. Motion passes for zero. Please open the door, Gary, behind you. Thank you. If anybody has forgotten, please turn the ringer off your phone and mute it. I know it's really easy to do to leave it on. Thank you very much. Up next is, I will now adjourn as a Housing Authority Board and convene as a Board of County Commissioners. Gary, what's next?
Next is a public hearing. Item one: First reading of an ordinance adding Chapter 8.10, Short Term Rentals to the Clackamas County Code. Stephen Madcor, County Counsel, will present, assisted by Everett Wild, Policy Advisor for the Board of Commissioners. Go ahead, please.
Thank you, Gary. Good evening, Commissioners. We are here for a public hearing and the first reading of an amendment to the county code, and this amendment would allow for short-term rentals in appropriate zones within the county. This is the first reading, you will have a second one. The date of that reading will be announced at the end of this presentation. I'm going to walk you through what this proposal entails, and I'll be available for questions afterwards, as will Everett Wild. So what we are proposing is a scaled-back, low-barrier, low-entry provision for short-term rentals, and it would allow for registration of short-term rentals. It's a two-step process. One is going to be a registration form, which is on the back of the packet that we circulated to you. This is where the owner or the representative certifies that it's a permitted use, that they've read the code, that they will abide by the code, that they will pay the transient lodging tax, and that they will pay the administrative fee a .85%. It is self-authenticating, self-attesting. They're not swearing, they're just writing it down on a piece of paper that this is what they do, and they're going to abide by the health and safety components within the registration itself, which is fire alarms, smoke detectors, fire extinguishers, things along those lines. You have some requirements in there, in the code, that have met with some commentary from members of the public, and I'll walk you through those as well. You circulated a packet of, I believe, all the comments that you received from constituents over the course of this notice period. So some of those areas of concern included, the, one was, what do you do with some of these places up in Government Camps specifically, which are larger places? They have the ski lodges up there. There's a Cascade Ski Lodge, there's another place where he has a recreational place where there's like five different units. So there might be carve-out exceptions for a few of those. So those would be captured in here, but those wouldn't necessarily meet the other requirements that we have for parking for all the bedrooms and things along those lines. So you might want to consider providing an exception for some of those. You also heard about garbage. Garbage is something that people say we should require, that folks take the garbage with them, that they bring it out right when the garbage truck comes, and things along those lines. You have it that you have to have garbage service, and it has to be on a regular basis. Some of the comments that you received from the constituents were, tenants will bring out the garbage on a Sunday, and the garbage truck doesn't come till a Wednesday, and it's been exposed to animals and weather and things along those lines, and it might be a garbage issue. So that is something that some of the constituents have raised as being potentially problematic. You also have, the number-one concern seems to be that people don't want their name posted on the property itself. What you currently have is the name, well, the proposed language is, "The name and contact information of the responsible party shall be posted while paying guests are on the property in an area and size to be readily visible from the nearest public roadway." That is really not an unusual provision in short-term rental regulations. Other places have, "Here's a 24/7 hotline sign," but that is an area that some, again, some of the constituents have protested, saying that it's going to result in vigilanteism, it's going to result in people improperly or unfairly calling in and making complaints, it's going to expose me as a property owner, and things along those lines. I'm just pointing that out for your information. That was an area of concern expressed by folks. Another was the cost. The cost is, as currently presented, is zero. You file the registration, you go to the county, you do it either online, or you go to the county finance, and you file this paperwork. You would be getting a registration number, that registration number is supposed to show up on all your portals, if you advertise through VRBO, Airbnb, and likewise, you would say registration number, "Clackamas County 746," or whatever it might be. There is an administrative fee charged component to this, .85%, and that would be billed on to the nightly rate. If it's $100 per night, how much would that be, Everett? I'm the lawyer, not the mathematician.
Oh, I'm not a mathematician either. Everett Wild, Policy Advisor for the Board of County Commissioners, so at $100 a night, it would be 85 cents.
Thank you.
And so, you also had comments on the enforcement mechanism, which is where we said, the proposal you have before you, it reads that the county encourages owners and affected residents to cooperate directly, and that means be good neighbors, right? Even if it is an absentee landlord, we know who owns it because you're posting it out front. You call them up and you say, "Hey, your tenants left garbage here, they're parking in my driveway," things along those lines. Some people liked it, some people did not like it. So, again, part of the low barrier, if there's no registration fee, there could really not be a lot of robust enforcement from the county because none of it's really funded. And so that is something in there, there is a more tiered-up enforcement component based on the number of complaints. The county would send warning letters to the offending properties and encourage them to voluntarily comply. That is consistent with our code enforcement methodology currently anyway. We encourage voluntary compliance on code violations, that's just how we do it. So, that was another area of concern. It does have a penalty provision, and that is, if there's going to be numbers, those will be imposed by resolution. So you could change it, it could be 100 bucks per violation, 250, it's up to the Board. I don't recommend it go into code because you change it every year when you do your fines, fees, and charges update. That's the best place for that to reside. We also have language in there saying, it's the last section, transitory provisions. This is a two-year project. This is going to be revisited after two years to see if it's successful, if it needs improvement, if it needs to be amended, if it needs to be repealed, or if it needs to be enhanced. So those are all provisions that you have before you. Again, happy to answer any questions. The county's been in response with the Airbnb people, they wrote a letter in support essentially. One thing that they actually did ask, they asked that it be included in the code, that the intermediary, which is the platform, Airbnb and others, that they would be responsible for paying the state and the local tax. And that is something that could be there, again, at your discretion, at your call. The CASA, another portal, asked why it wasn't 15 occupants as the limit as opposed to 12. This current proposal is for 12 maximum, and that came out of, I believe, your outreach with folks on the mountain and others. Our zoning ordinance does say 15, that's the size, maximum size of a family for a single-family house. The difference is inconsequential for our planning folks, they said 12 is fine. There was a recommendation from our planning folks as well, and that was that we add a parking exception for the mountain area, which has a zoning rural tourist commercial zone, and call it resort accommodations because of the tight parking up there, because of the snow accumulation. Not every facility is going to have adequate parking as specified here. If you go up to Government Camps in the winter, there's that loop, they all park on that street, and they walk down to the house. And so, that is something that, again, our planning people support those revisions and modifications. So I'm happy to answer any questions that the Board may have.
Commissioners, do you have any questions?
Chair, just have a comment I'd just like to make. First of all, I think we've been at this for six or seven years, for this journey, and initially it started out, as I thought, a pretty onerous, expensive proposal that was on, which I did not support, which was $800 a year, signup fee, you know, quite a bit of staff, and I thought quite onerous as far as regulations were. And it's very complicated, but through all the boards and all the discussions and all the public meetings I went to on the mountain, down here in town, and around the area, the three large meetings, I've listened, we've recorded all of that, and I appreciate working with Commissioner Scholl on where we are today in this pilot, this two-year pilot, which, you know, has no annual fee, and frankly, at $100 a night, the 85 cents is a pretty nominal fee, that's actually paid by the people who rent. So if you don't have your rental rented, you're not going to pay a dime. If you don't rent it for a whole year, you don't pay a dime if you rent it several times, and you'll just pay that percentage fee of .85% of the rental, of that evening, that daily rental. We got a lot of input from operators who actually suggested we actually raise it from something to $100 or $50 a year. We're taking all that in, we're going to be listening here tonight, we're going to be listening, reading all the emails that come in from here forward, and factoring that into the hearing in September to make any adjustments. So, welcome all the ideas and the input. As far as the garbage, the one thing I did want to say was, that is an issue for some areas that have bears and so forth, and a mountain is pretty common. So it's our hope that, you know, we can, the operators are, will consider purchasing or leasing some bear-proof containers for some of those areas where, you know, animals could get to it and attract. On the parking, lastly on the parking, now, we've heard all the complaints, and I've read some of the, I let almost all the emails here, pretty much, I didn't see in the last two hours what came in, but I will say, people ask, "Well, why are you doing this?" And I, you know, the complaints have been, whether it's here in town, or whether it's in the rural areas, or if it's on the mountain, is that sometimes people are, it's not their neighborhood, they don't live there, they're there for a couple nights, they are very loud, they overpark, they maybe block driveways and parking, and when they're clearing the streets, or there's an emergency, can't get through. And we've always had a policy here, I think all of our Commissioners have always said that people should have, so to speak, a property right, and that is the peaceful enjoyment of your property. So I think that is what has driven us to do something as opposed to nothing, and I agree, people should have the peaceful, the right of the peaceful enjoyment of their property. And on the weekends, that's our, that's a time where a lot of people enjoy their home, their home, you know, it's not a workday, they want to enjoy, and on the weekends, that's the highest rental, those two days. So this is a big deal for a lot of people, and I appreciate all the input we've gotten thus far. So Chair, that's all I wanted to say for now.
Thank you. Commissioner Scholl, you're up.
Yes, thank you. I just want to say that I believe that this current draft regulation reflects the Board's concern for property rights of all people, for the people who wish to use their property as an STR to generate some extra income, and also respects the people who do not have an STR and wish to have their livability of their neighborhood preserved. One thing that we haven't talked about this evening is density of STRs, or the number of STRs in the county. And that will be a subject that we will address two years from now at the end of the pilot program, when we see how many STRs we actually have, we'll deal with that problem. So thank you very much.
Before I open the public hearing, let me clarify procedurally what we're doing here tonight. Tonight is the first of at least two public hearings on short-term rentals. We are establishing the ordinance, and it's very important that we take in as much information as we can. Staff will be capturing your feedback. If you don't hear us, respond to your particular question or recommendation. Please make sure you email us at bcc@clackamas.us, and we will respond. Like the Commissioners said, this has been a very long time in the making, and I believe it was onerous. We heard testimony, testimony, $800 is onerous, and I do believe it is, for instance, for the person who owns a family cabin, maybe up by Mount Hood, and they rent it out occasionally to help pay the maintenance, property taxes, and insurance. And $800 would be too much for them. However, there are other places who have more rentals than just one. We're trying to reach a happy medium. What wasn't said here tonight is, if you have a property and you rent it, it's considered to be part of the transit tax. And we're trying to capture those people who should be paying the tax or the fees, while a lot of other people in the county are paying the tax and the fees, and we're trying to be as fair as possible with that. I do like the idea from Stephen Madcor, that the Airbnb wants to be the collector of all the fees at the time of the rental, and I think that's very good procedure. We've all rented properties, I hope, we've rented a, you know, hotel room at the coast, or we've been traveling, or we've rented an Airbnb, and you'll see a base price of maybe, I don't know, I'll make this up, $200, if you can find an Airbnb for $200, and then by the time you add up all the fees and taxes, they can be somewhat onerous, and that's unfortunate. But unfortunately, that's, you know, the era that we live in, if you're going to own a property, that will be something that the owners need to take care of. Commissioners, we have a lot of cards here tonight on a lot of different topics, and we will get started as soon as Commissioners have made their comments. Savas, you're up.
Yeah, one thing I did forget, thanks Chair.
Yeah.
And that is that some of the emails I read kind of indicated that they thought that we're doing this for cash flow for the county, that we're going to live off of this. Well, we really brought down that percentage rate of the rental down quite a bit, so it's 85 cents for $100 a night unit, and this is really a really slim conservative amount that we're going to operate this, so it's no cost to the county, we're not going to make any money on it, it's going to pay for itself for two years, we need to adjust it up or down a little bit, but the taxes that are being paid do not go to the county. The taxes, the transient room tax, that rental goes towards a separate organization, which is somewhat part of the county, but not our coffers, it goes to the Tourism Development Council, and they distribute those fees, and that's, there's a state tax, there's a local tax, and so forth, so those fees are mandatory to be paid by state statute.
Thank you. I will now open the meeting for public testimony. I will take the first person, people in the room first, and we do have a number of people online who want to testify on short-term rentals. Doug Saldivar, did I pronounce that correctly, sir? Well, come on up. Please state your name, your area of residence, and you have three minutes. You bet.
Well, my name is Doug Saldivar. I've lived on the mountain for 33 years, and I'm actually an ex-STR owner, a taxpaying STR owner. But what I wanted to talk about was something that Commissioner Scholl just mentioned, and I think it's a little bit more urgent than waiting for two years. And that's how STRs have affected the housing situation in our area. Every week, up at the mountain, we have a social media called Next Door, and every week we see pleas by young families and couples asking to rent a house. Let me read it, let me read a short posting here so you can get an idea of what I'm talking about. "How does one find a rental, something, a home for rent up here? My partner and I have been here since 2017. We're pretty well-known, I'd say we're locals. We both have full-time jobs on the mountain, we have two incomes. We pay $1,800 to $2,000 a month just to live in a censored RV." I won't say the word, don't worry. "And I can't live this RV life much longer. These are working people, desperately making pleas for a place to live, so that they can be close to their service jobs, they can send their kids to our schools, and live at, excuse me, live in our community. And they are also the same people that work in the resort, work at the golf course, ski resorts, and our restaurants. The Tourism Development Council is working very hard to ask people to come to our region, and we know, you know, we're in a, our economy is tourism, so that's great. But when our guests come, and they can't find enough people to properly staff the services that help them enjoy their trip, well, it's, they're not quite satisfied with it, let's put it that way. So, this is a hard thing to numerically quantify, and most of the local evidence that we have is anecdotal. But I sent the Commission some articles from all over the country, and it seems pretty obvious that in many other places in the country, this has become a problem. So it's not just people on the mountain asking for a place to live, it's everywhere. It's everywhere in the country this is going on. So it, you know, if you think about it, it makes sense. Four or five years ago, a person wanted to rent out their house as a full-time rental, they could do that, but now they can turn it into an STR and make four or five times the amount of money. One of the STR management companies here actually sends out letters to, whoops, to recruit."
Doug, thank you very much. Please send the rest of your comments by email, that is your three, we have a huge crowd, and they all want their three minutes, but I thank you very much.
I understand. Thanks.
Right, okay. Up next, Ron Branstadler, come on up. Please state your name, your area of residence, and you have three minutes.
Ron Branstadler. We're in outer Milwaukee, near, between Bell and Linwood and King and Johnson Creek, and yeah, very working-class, quiet neighborhood, nobody is coming in buying up properties to set up STRs. So yeah, I thought that this draft was going to be much more elaborate, and the previous meetings Commissioners were talking about things like, you know, classifying the STRs by types of owners, absentee owners, owner-operators, and things like that. Mount Hood sounds like it needs a special district of its own, which can take much stronger, you know, regulations than the rest of us need. So yeah, give us a special district to Mount Hood, consider that. There is some vague writing in the proposal, I'm glad that you clarified that the 85% was for one day, one night's rental. We charge different rates in the winter and summer, do we have to average it, or is it just the day that the registration form comes to us?
It's .85 cents per $100. For $100.
So you want us to average basically our rates over the year or something?
Go ahead, I won't take up your time, go ahead.
The one area of vague writing is the area that I really got exercised about in the previous drafts that were rejected for the short-term rental, and I sent a lot of letters about pools and tubs. This, you know, "Code-compliant pool and hot tub areas shall be present if applicable." Now, that is very vague. What is applicable, what is not applicable? My problem is that my owner, the previous owner of the property 25 years ago, built this new unit, and he put a hot tub right next to it, right next to the stairway, right underneath one of the bedroom windows, and it's right in the middle of everything. If I have to put in, I looked all around for the code regulations, what are the code regulations? Nobody could tell me. I called and called and called, nobody ever returned a call from Clackamas County about what the code regulations are. I found something in the library, you know, where a safety committee had written a proposal, you know, you had to have, you know, chain-link fence with cement foundations, blah, 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 gate alarms on everything, and some counties in Oregon have adopted it, but no mention of Clackamas County. No one in Clackamas County could tell me what the regulations were. Yeah, so anyway, the owner put in this hot tub 25 years ago, it's fairly antique now. We are not offering it as part of the thing, it is not offered, not advertised. When the guests come, I tell them, "Hey, I like to take a hot tub right under your window sometimes after midnight," and give them a chance to say, "No, I don't like, that doesn't sound nice to me." Only a few people have said that. But yeah, it's, if I have to put in big cement fences, cement foundation fences, I'm going to be in a big mess, and so...
Thank you very much. Yeah, that's three minutes, sir, and I gave you a little bit more because we, we talked.
Yeah, if pools or hot tubs on premises are advertised and offered to...
Sir, please, please, look, I can't make an exception. Thank you very much, you can send us an email.
I want to be the exception.
Yes, we're not, thank you very much, I just appreciate it, everybody would do three minutes. We have a lot of cards after our consent agenda, please, it would help the Commissioners very much. Up next, Lori Kaiser. Please state your name, area of residence, and you have three minutes.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Lori Kaiser, and I live in Milwaukee. I am a homeowner and have been renting a one-room suite with private, separate entrance, Airbnb in my home for over four years. I am a super host with over 200 reviews and a 4.98 rating. I have a commission-only... I have a commission-only job and am very much dependent on the income from my Airbnb in order to keep a roof over my head. I don't own whole houses that are used as Airbnbs on Mount Hood or elsewhere, and want to represent for the many other hosts that are in the same position as myself. Those who have also worked hard to become homeowners and are trying to make a living and stay afloat after paying their expenses and taxes. My neighbors often have friends and family book my place as they don't have room in their own houses to host guests. I hear wonderful stories from my guests about all the places they have visited while coming to our state, and I love that my Airbnb is a little part in helping bring that income and tourism to Oregon. I keep my property in tidy shape and I have never had any complaints from guests or neighbors. I am understanding of the fees that will be charged by Clackamas County related to STRs and can appreciate the importance of having a good system to track and have consistent standards for all Airbnbs. However, what was once a lifesaver side business for me to make ends meet is quickly becoming difficult to pencil out and justify as a viable and profitable business. For example, if I rent my room for $99 for a one-night stay, it costs me 50 to 75 to have the room cleaned before counting additional expenses like utilities, laundry, et cetera. On top of those operating expenses, I still have the cost of the 1.5% state occupancy tax, the 6% county occupancy tax, and the .85% county administration fee. I already adhere to and meet all the proposed criteria for health and safety, parking, garbage disposal, et cetera. There is one area in your STR criteria that makes me uneasy. Your proposed regulations require, quote, "The name and contact information for the responsible party shall be posted on the property in an area and size to be readily visible from the nearest public roadway. I am a single woman and I am concerned about having my personal name and contact phone number posted outside of my house for anyone to access. Is there any other way for these complaints or comments to be handled rather than me having to provide my personal information for every person or vehicle that passes my personal residence? I very much appreciate your time and listening to my concern. Thank you so much."
Thank you very much. Up next, Richard Carlson. Please state your name, your area of residence, and you have three minutes.
My name is Richard Carlson, and we have...
Please sit down in the microphone so we can record you.
We have a home in Welch's in the Rippling River area, right around the resort, and as a matter of fact, we've owned that home since 2006. Now that I'm retired, we spend most of our time up there, otherwise we lived in Tigard. I've also been on and currently on the Rippling River Association Board of Directors, actually I've been the chairperson for several years. And in our area, we have 150 properties. Out of those, we've got 19 or 20 STRs. Many of those are not problems, but some of them are very significant problems. In the last year, we've had, as a board, we've had many meetings concerning STRs because of the concern of our neighbors. I'm not here testifying on behalf of the association, I'm here in my personal capacity based upon my experience in our neighborhood. But I can tell you that our HOA has had to deal with STRs. Our maximum fine is $500, and the homes in our area make pretty good money off of their rentals. And I think the problems are pretty well-known with STRs, and I'm not talking about those STRs where the owner is on-site. I think those are a little different. In our area, that's not the situation. And, you know, I think you have to put yourself in the position of, what if this is your home, this is where you live, and the house next to you is a rental and it's for people that vacation? They come up there to vacation, they come up there to party, and so, you know, if you can put your mind into that type of mindset, somebody mentioned the peaceful enjoyment of property, and I think that's the real concern. There's a house across the street from where we are that rents, they originally rented, it's a fairly large house, they originally rented 18, now they've reduced it to 15 people. That house is rented every weekend, it's rented frequently during the week, and the next-door neighbor, they have their bedroom right next to this house. And of course, on the back deck is the hot tub. And so there have been many complaints concerning this particular facility, but, you know, in our area, we have renters coming up for weekends, we have renters coming up for golf outings, skiers, and the rentals are, the amount of money is significant. We've had fireworks that get shot off from these places, so I guess the bottom line is I would support whatever regulation you deem appropriate, but there needs to be some type of regulation, occupancy regulations.
Thank you very much, I appreciate that.
Thank you.
And your story is quite interesting. Up next, Stan Pierce. Please state your name, your area of residence, and you have three minutes.
Good evening, my name is Stan Pierce and I live in Brightwood. Good evening, commissioners. My wife and I own and operate a short-term vacation rental that is located approximately four feet from the cabin we live in. We have operated our STR since January of 2020. Our STR is one of the STRs, one of four STRs on our street. Not once in the five years that we have lived in our neighborhood have we or our neighbors have had any issues with the guests renting these homes. Conversely, we have had the exact opposite experience than those in the Tim Rim neighborhood that have been complaining about on either the app Next Door or in the Mountain Times. We have had the pleasure of hosting guests from throughout the country and Europe. For instance, a year ago, we hosted a delightful family from London. To watch the family spending time down at our creek enjoying each other and their kids skipping stones and hop from one boulder to another was a blessing. Last week, we hosted another family who were from the Netherlands. Early on, we had a marriage proposal at our STR, the list goes on. STRs provide an environment that the hotels and resorts cannot provide. Some of our guest families who are visiting invite other family members to have a relaxing time reuniting with each other. We love it when we see these families coming together. This is no different than when my wife and I rented an Airbnb in Vero Beach, Florida last year. It provided the perfect location for family and friends to converse after my mom's funeral. As previously mentioned, it appears that the most of the issues are residing in the Tim Rim area. As the community has covenants, conditions and restrictions, plus a homeowners' association in place, wouldn't it stand to reason that they already have the governing tools to address their short-term vacation rental issues? When our neighborhood is nearly three miles away and on a different side of the Highway 26, why should our STR, in addition to the other four, be negatively impacted by an additional 8% tax? If the Tim Rim community are not able to work out a solution with the owners and/or manager of their properties documenting the problem instances and specific steps taken of honest resolution, then Clackamas County should set up a special tax zone, which would tax the problematic rental houses at first, otherwise tax all the vacation rentals in that area, however, not ours. On our Airbnb listing, our potential guests are aware of the quiet hours between 9:30 PM and 7 AM before they book us.
Thank you very much. Attorney Stephen Magcor, would you repeat the amount of the fee for this? It's not 8%?
.85.
.85 per $100, just point of clarification. Up next, Donna Rogers. Please come forward, state your name, your area of residence, and you have three minutes.
Some maps to share, please.
Hand them to the clerk over here, thank you.
Thank you for commissioners letting us speak on this important issue.
Introduce yourself.
I've passed out some maps.
May I please introduce yourself?
Oh, I'm sorry, Donna Rogers, and I live in Tim Rim. And I am representing myself, not the HOA. And so I had two issues, and since you were going to push density off, I would like to start with density first. And would I like to show the camera, or whoever? Where's the camera?
Right there, we can see that, thank you.
Okay, thank you. This map represents Tim Rim, and it has quite a few, these lots are 100 feet by 100 feet, and there is probably 80 homes in our rim, so it's nice that I followed that gentleman. So what I would like to say is, yes, our life has changed substantially. Tim Rim on that map is one square mile, that's one square mile, and that has about 85 homes that are vacation rentals. They sit right next to each other, and it is quite disturbing, as our community has already said, and there will probably be some other people speaking to it. But I really am here to talk about fire. And on August 1st, you had a hearing about fire preparedness, and in my community, I have worked tirelessly for years to help my community be fire-wise and fire-safe. So I was on your commissioners' meeting at the town hall, listened to it, and here's what I can tell you, that I, we have had illegal fires forever, you spoke about it in there, burn barrels, fire pits. Almost every STR that has a fire pit in our community advertises it on Airbnb, and I had ODF came out, we have been on a fire ban since July 1st. And that map in there that shows the setting of my community, it is all forested. And we've had Ant Farm out, you also mentioned that, they have been helping us, but every, almost every vacation rental on the river has a fire pit. So during this last couple of, better hurry, during the beginning of the season, which we have not had a heavy fire season this year, but we will, and there was, I walked around the community, we had it posted by ODF on Friday, I walked around the community on Sunday night, there were four fires, four fires. Two of them were vacation rentals, and they told me that they read the posting at the mailboxes or at the lodge, but it said in a designated fire location. So two of the four fires said this is our designated fire location.
Thank you very much.
So I just asked that you would consider adding it under the fire safety.
Thank you very much, we have heard you. Thank you very much, and again, this is just our first stab at this, we may need a second or even a third hearing, and we do take your comments seriously. Up next is Mike Casely. Please state your name, your area of residence, and you have three minutes.
Hi, Mike Casely, live in Welch's. I'm here on sanitation and not the garbage end of it, it's the other end of it. I'd like to propose that all STRs that have septic tanks, sand filters, alternative treatment systems be annually inspected by a licensed contract that performs maintenance and should be part of the STR registration process. The reason is currently in older STR cabins, several have compromised tanks and inadequate drain fields. I've actually seen where the sewage has come up and backed into the houses, it's not a very nice thing to see. Clackamas County currently has this department in place for newer sand filters and alternative systems, and it's an Oregon Administrative Rule 340-071. My feelings, if these systems are not up to EPA standards or Oregon Administrative Rule standards, they need to be brought into compliance, and that's to ensure quality groundwater. If they can't come into compliance, they should be shut down until they are compliant. Currently, I have an advanced treatment tank I had put in 10 years ago, and I have to have a two-year contract, and I have a letter from Clackamas County where they forgot to turn into paperwork for me. So it listed out the administrative rules, I have a copy if anybody wanted to look at it, because it's quite interesting. And Clackamas County gets 70 bucks for it, so. In retrospect, I guess if these systems are not compliant, Clackamas County get a lot of permit money to get them up to compliance. Thanks for your time.
Thank you very much. Up next, David Lithgow. It's hard to read some people's writings sometimes. David, please come forward, state your name correctly and area of residence, and you have three minutes.
I'm David Lithgow, I live in Welch's, have lived up on the mountain for 76 years. I read the regulations and I think they're good for the most part. Thanks very much for proposing them. The three areas that I wanted to comment on, and I have sent an email on a couple of these already. One would be the garbage. I agree that the garbage should not be randomly put out, there should be a limit as to how far before pickup they can be, and perhaps one day, perhaps a day of pickup. Second area of concern is the vagueness of the signage. The wording seemed very vague, and I think a standard should be set for that sign, perhaps two foot by two foot or one and a half by one and a half, but there should be a standard. Lastly, and this might go back to what Donna Rogers said, is I'm really concerned about the fire danger. People come to the mountain and they want to have their camp out, and they don't pay attention to bans or rules, they have their wood-burning fires. I think that this could be rectified if it was mandatory that short-term rentals had propane fire pits. They don't produce bark, they don't produce annoying smoke. Some of our lots up there are 7,000 square feet, 70 feet wide. A smoking fire pit is detrimental to the neighbor, and sparks can easily be transferred. I looked up tonight the cost of those fire pits, and you can get a nice propane fire pit for between $50 to $200. I don't think it'd be an overburden on short-term rental owners. I sincerely don't want the mountain to be another Lahaina or another paradise. Thanks for your time.
Thank you very much. Up next, Fran Mazara. Please state your name, your area of residence, and you have three minutes.
Hello, many of you know me. I've been fighting this battle since 2014. A couple of things to make you aware of. The garbage. We have bears, we have bears that come through every night, we have bears that I have pictures of, we have, they're not an odd happening. People have to, my, well, the next-door neighbor built an enclosure, top, bottom, all around, a nice little shed, and it solved the bear problem because they used to tackle their garbage and it would end up all the way up the street. So bears are not a sometimes thing. We almost, it's basically like Lake Tahoe, you see them walking around the street all the time. Cars parked in the street, you have to put in a regulation in a way that we can enforce it. You have to put in a regulation in a way that we can enforce it. We have had instances where the fire department and the ambulance cannot get up our street. There are too many cars. There's an emergency there. They can't get in. I have frequently called the ambulance for my husband. It can't get through. You have... In the winter, they come up, they park their cars. They don't have snow tires. They get stranded in the snow. The snow pile can't get through. So parking is not what the city is. Number of people in a STR. How can we enforce it? Two people rent a place. They're lovely people. They invite 50 of their closest friends. Okay? I cannot tell you the noise that 25, 50, upwards of 100 celebrating. This is not a mom-and-pop operation. None of the owners... We have... Our street is all STRs. No longer are they mom-and-pop. These are full-time STRs. They don't stay in them. They don't visit them. They're an investment. You read Airbnb, read VRBO, get in their stuff, and you'll see it's financial investment. As to the people that have STRs that are wonderful, these rules will not affect them because they keep an eye on their place. It's when we have no one except a paid manager who comes in and says, "There's nothing wrong."
Thank you very much. You can send the rest of your comments to our email. Thank you very much. Is there anyone else in the room who would like to testify on short-term rentals? We are still in the public hearing. Anyone else in the room, please come forward and fill out a card. While you are doing that, we are going to online testimony. Tony, there are some people online who would like to testify on short-term rentals. While he's calling those up, last call for anyone in the room who would like... Please fill out a card over here, madam, in the basket. Thank you. The guard will help you. Thank you. And last call for anyone in the room. Tony, who's online?
Madam Chair, we'll begin with Sue Ellen White. Ms. White, please state your name and area of residence. You will have three minutes.
Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. My name is Sue Ellen White, and I'm a fourth-generation Oregonian. My family first bought property at the mountain in about 1922. And we have the cabin built in 1932 for our... Hopefully, our great-grandchildren. So in order to keep it and keep it in good repair, we need to rent it out when we are not using it. I appreciate the very thoughtful process that the commission has gone through and understand there's a great number of factors and opinions to consider. I believe probably the logical place to start, if possible, with regulation is local. So at Tim Rim, presumably they have an HOA, and they can control density and any number of other issues. That's not to say that that should mean that this is not passed. But I think that they seem to have a lot of problems. We have 2 and 1/2 acres of old growth on our property. So I am deeply concerned about provision 8.10.050-HH, which states that the name and contact information shall be posted while paying guests are on the property to be seen from the public roadway. It seems to me that this, first of all, is kind of an invasion of privacy. And you don't require other people to do this. Say, people who have dogs that might bark so that the neighbors or others can call them and complain about their barking dog. You don't even require, you know, convicted sex offenders to post it. And I think that the responsibility instead lies with the regulating agency. So that you have specified also in Section 8.10.040-B5, provides contact information to county officials with registration with the county. And I believe this is the appropriate place for this kind of information where problems should be reported. And so if it takes a little bit more money in the budget to be able to enforce this, then it should be raised to 1%. All this, of course, gets passed on to the people who rent because it's a business that someone is running or trying to pay their bills. And the appropriate place for complaints is to the designated county authority, I believe. One other question is that in 8.10.80, your second sentence says that it should be made clear that property owners and residents, of course, should try and cooperate with each other. But the legal authority for enforcement and determination of what the problem is and the responsibility should rest with the appropriate agency of Clackamas County. Otherwise, if you have phone numbers, not only is it scary for single women...
Thank you very much, Sue Ellen. You can send the rest of your comments by email.
I have...
Tony, who's next?
Continuing the list, I will continue with Julianne Huber. Please state your name and area of residence. You will have three minutes. Julianne, you are muted.
Tony, we'll come back to her at the end of your list. Maybe she has technical difficulties. Please go on to the next person.
Next on the list, Barbara Smith. Ms. Smith, please state your name and area of residence. You will have three minutes.
Barbara Smith. I live in Rhododendron. And I want to first acknowledge that several of the comments about the signs being posted on a road, you know, I think that is probably a lot. I think having it posted in a more secure location, like on the house, would be reasonable. But I do think that the owner information, even if it's just available at the county, is important because often the rental companies do not respond. And a lot of this stuff happens at night. They don't respond. So I don't disagree with the possibility of modifying that a little bit. The second thing I wanted to discuss is trash. Many people have brought that up. We live in an area where there's lots of bears. And it really... When people, they come and they have the house cleaned on Monday, and trash pickup is not till Wednesday, then other people end up having to clean rental trash off of their property because the bears spread it all around. They don't keep it on the rental property. And I was very upset earlier this year when a neighbor in her 80s was out picking up trash on a slope because the rental above her, the bears had gotten to the trash. And that's not right. That should be the responsibility of the owner of that home. But more importantly, I think that they need to either have to buy a bear-proof trash can, which there are some available. They use them in Durango, Colorado. They should either have to buy that or make sure that their trash is only put out the morning of trash pickup day, which is what everybody who lives on the mountain does. We don't put our trash out the day before for exactly that reason. And the bears become very habituated. That's not healthy for the bears. It's not healthy for the community. The last thing, I wanted to agree with the gentleman who spoke earlier about septic compliance. A lot of these cabins are... Have been around for a long, long time. And they have... Their septic consists of basically a hole in the ground. And, you know, if they're only using it on the weekends or it's an occasional thing, you know, there's not much to be done about it. But when they're renting it out regularly, that becomes a big problem. And I totally agree that if you're going to lease your property, it becomes a health and safety issue if you do not bring your septic up to some...
Thank you very much. We appreciate your testimony. Up next.
Next on the list, Angeline Adler. Please state your name and area of residence. You will have three minutes.
Hello. Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, hi. We have an STR on the mountain. I am a native Oregonian. We had a recreational forestry service cabin when I was a child. So I've been up here forever. We try and be really good stewards. I agree with most of the things that are being proposed. We clean the cabin ourselves. I agree that the trash needs to be taken away immediately. And if that is VACASA taking it because they're the representative, they're in a secured area, something absolutely should be done there. I am very concerned about having my name and number or my name and number of my daughter, who helps me clean, have that out here. If it just says a phone number, you know, for, you know, representative contact number and a phone number, but having somebody's name, which will identify the sex, I just think that it's asking for trouble. And to see it from the road, if it's up on the house on a, you know, a five-by-seven, you know, piece of paper within so many feet of the door or, you know, within the front of the house from the driveway, some kind of language. But to see it, I mean, some of these, I mean, you would have to make a sign that would be huge for somebody to see that. So just keeping some maybe common sense in that for safety, I think, is very, very important. I think absolutely the long-term housing needs of this community need to be met. And, you know, there just isn't apartments up here. And there's not hotels up here. And that's why STRs and, you know, why tickets are sold out at Mount Hood. It's just the increase of population. And STRs have filled the need. And there also is a need of community members. They've built a small complex here. If something could be done, a tax later on, even 1% going into an actual building fund, I don't know what the answer is there. It's a problem all over the country. But I do think, looking long-term, we do need to help solve the housing issue of the people who really work here. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Tony, who's next?
Next on the list, Ned Dobner. Please state your name and area of residence. You will have three minutes.
Yes, I'm Ned Dobner from Portland, Oregon. I work with VACASA. Some of this question has been addressed already, which is, for places that have been successful and responsible rentals in the past that may not meet the parking requirement, especially as been mentioned up on Government Camp, is there a grandfathered position for those places? So that was my main question and my main concern. Thank you.
Thank you. Up next, Tony.
Next up, John Schmidt. Please state your name and area of residence. You will have three minutes.
Yeah, my name's John Schmidt, and I own a unit at Collins Lake Resort in Government Camp that I've rented out on Airbnb for five and a half years. I appreciate the county's efforts related to short-term rentals and recognize that such regulations may be necessary in certain unincorporated areas where the county simply couldn't have anticipated these transient uses or their effects when establishing zoning laws and processing land use applications for these areas years ago. That said, certain housing developments in the unincorporated areas, specifically in Government Camp, already have regulations in place to address the various concerns that the draft ordinance is designed to address. The first opportunity to address these issues came when the involvements were originally entitled and permitted. For example, Collins Lake Resort, which is comprised of 151 units, is in the Mountain Recreation Resort Zone. And the county planning department had the opportunity to condition the project with the notion of a resort in mind, which necessarily involves transient tourism-driven activity and short-term overnight opportunities. The county, no doubt, took the opportunity to condition the Collins Lake accordingly with things like parking and garbage, fire safety, and access in mind. On top of the bill conditions that would have resulted from the county conditioning the project with transient activities in mind, Collins Lake Resort and presumably other such resorts or group housing facilities also have homeowners associations with robust and detailed bylaws that further address all the issues that the proposed ordinance would address, including noise, insurance requirements, and so forth. With all of this in mind, I feel that it would make sense for the county to exempt Collins Lake Resort and similar housing from the draft ordinance. Should the county choose to exempt Collins Lake Resort, they could simply add whatever word best characterizes the facility to the list already written in the ordinance where it says, "This chapter does not apply to hotels, motels, bed and breakfast facilities, hostels, campgrounds, recreational vehicle camping facilities, or organization of camps." Another definition that could provide a bright line in terms of delineating the areas to be exempted from the ordinance would be the Mountain Recreation Resort zoning designation. In conclusion, whereas the new ordinance may provide the opportunity to fill a regulatory void in certain unincorporated areas that weren't set up to accommodate tourism and short-term rentals, layering these new regulations on top of areas or involvements that already address all of these issues by virtue of their zoning, design, or government documents would be unnecessary. It would be a poor use of the county's administrative resources and would a necessary burden to owners of these units who would effectively end up paying twice between their HOA dues and the ordinance compliance costs to address the exact same issues. It seems reasonable, however, that Collins Lake Resort and similar housing facilities could continue to pay the county's transient lodging tax in order to help the county address the broader issues created by transient lodging. Thank you very much for the opportunity to offer my thoughts this evening.
Thank you. Up next.
Next up, Kevin Boland. Please state your name and area of residence. You will have three minutes. Mr. Boland, you are muted. Next on my list, Jesus Solis. You have three minutes. Please state your name and area of residence.
Yeah, hi. This is Jesus Solis. I have Portland, Oregon. I represent Yoshida Group in this matter. We own a portion of the Grand Lodges currently. And we are currently in works developing a hotel in the area. I'd like to state a couple of different things that were stated. First, I'd like to address Paul Savis. I don't believe it's good customer service to simply pass on these fees to the tenants. That's just... That's not okay. We're all responsible for maintaining this area, the properties. It's not... It's just not okay to pass it on to a tenant. That's bad business and bad customer service. I think that there deserves to be an exemption for some of the larger resorts that was stated by the Collins Lake representative. I forget his name. I think he had some good ideas. I think VACASA definitely, as our operator, also stated some of the ideas. I think that in total, we tend to think that this makes cumbersome development and property ownership and property rentals for the common people that are trying to be residents. I mean, you've heard from them. This would create a burden that is unnecessary. And it's not needed at this time. It's already covered by multiple codes and taxes and fees that the county already has imposed on the citizens, including ourselves. So I think that while the intentions are great, I understand the problems that you guys are trying to address. There is no doubt a need for some sort of a control to this growing population of STRs. I think you guys need to possibly break this out into two different categories and be cautious of the people you are hurting, the actual residents that live in Government Camp. So that's all I got.
Thank you. Up next.
Next on the list, Devon Tau. Please state your name and area of residence. You will have three minutes.
Hi, this is Devon Tau, and we own a short-term rental in Rhododendron. I want to testify that I'm in support of the proposed rules and the rules and guidelines for Chapter 8.10. Thank you. Thank you.
Is that it?
Sir, do you have any further comments?
No, thank you.
Thank you very much. Up next.
Next on the list, Jordan Mitchell. Please state your name and area of residence. You will have three minutes.
Hello, everyone. My name's Jordan Mitchell, and I am with Airbnb. On behalf of Airbnb and our host community, thank you for your careful and deliberate consideration of short-term rentals. After reviewing the many public meetings and comment sessions, we appreciate that Clackamas County is taking a deliberate approach to creating sustainable and reasonable STR regulations. Airbnb was born in 2007, when two hosts welcomed three guests there to San Francisco home. And since it has grown to over 4 million hosts, who have welcomed 1.4 billion guest arrivals across over 220 countries, as such, we strive to be a good local partner and have taken significant steps to invest in the safety, security, and trust of our community and our platform, like our global ban on parties or neighborhood support hotline. We are also more than happy to communicate to our hosts any trash regulations that may come of this ordinance. The proposed framework, as put forth by the Planning Commission, addresses proper operational guidelines as well as licensing and registration requirements. These provisions demonstrate a commitment to effective regulation and oversight. In Clackamas County, Airbnb is an important economic tool for residents who share their homes to earn extra money. In 2022, the typical Airbnb host earned over $17,000. Home sharing has allowed residents to navigate the economic upheaval of the pandemic and pay for things like their mortgage, student loans, and save for retirement. The proposed ordinance was clearly developed with an eye towards making the permitting process simple and accessible for all Clackamas County hosts. Short-term rentals are not only an economic lifeline for hosts, but a source of economic opportunity for Clackamas County's small businesses. Home sharing enables the region to welcome visitors whose spending supports local businesses and creates economic opportunity for local residents. As such, we recommend amending the current ordinance to ensure hosts may continue to list their homes while they are awaiting a permit from the county. Implementing this small change would ensure higher compliance rates and allow hosts to not have their income disrupted by following the law. We look forward to continuing the conversation with the county to find ways to achieve this goal. Additionally, Airbnb understands the need for local governments to collect all applicable taxes, which is why we would like to offer to work with Clackamas County staff on an agreement to collect and remit taxes on behalf of the county. We look forward to continuing discussions on this topic before final passage. Again, thank you for working to develop an ordinance that clearly defines short-term rentals and creates permitting process for the host community that is reasonable and accessible. We are always available to discuss the impact of the ordinance or to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you. Up next.
Next up, Barbara Bresen. Please state your name and area of residence. You will have three minutes. Next on the list, Dennis Tealka. Please state your name and area of residence. You will have three minutes. Next on the list, Sarah Roberson. Please state your name and area of residence. You will have three minutes.
Yes, I'm Sarah Roberson, and I live in Timberline Rim, Division 5. I want everybody to hear this, because a couple of people brought this up, saying that Timberline Rim has a way to regulate the STRs. We do not. I'm also a member of the board, so I can speak to this. Years ago, the residents of Timberline Rim voted down the CCNRs. So we have no way to regulate or do anything about an STR in our neighborhood. We are asking the county's help to get some sort of regulations over the number of STRs. My little neighborhood in Division 5 has about 60 homes, and 30% of them are STRs, and more of them will be as more properties are sold. I want to also say about the garbage, we have STRs that leave their garbage cans out 100% of the time. I encountered a Vacasa worker, and he said, "No, they don't put them out, nor do they pick them up and put them back into, near the houses." And so that's not an option. And I also don't want to look at bear cages in everybody's yard. I want people to do the right thing. They put the garbage out on the morning of the garbage pickup, and they bring that can in at night. That's what all the residents do. We've done that for years. They need to make this work. If you own an STR, you're responsible. But please, I don't want to look at your bear cages or your garbage cans out there all the time. The other thing is parking. We do have cars that park in the street. It is dangerous. The street in front of my house cannot bear people parking in the street if there is an ambulance coming by or a fire truck. It is not safe. And I don't know how you can go about getting a person's name that would be responsible when something happens at an STR in the middle of the night. Perhaps you need a register on Clackamas County that you can look up the address and find out who to go to. And that way, you wouldn't have a sign in somebody's yard or on their house. Personally, I've encountered STR people. I'm not going to go walking up close to the house that they have rented to find out the name of the person that I need to call. That's dangerous. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Up next, Tony.
Next up, Dennis Tealka. Please state your name and area of residence. You will have three minutes.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. I'd like to talk about a couple of things. Is your definition of a sleeping area, it needs to be more defined to a bedroom? Or, so a bay window couldn't have a mat on it and be considered a sleeping area, or a closet? And then also with bedrooms, is the county also needs to make sure that the number of bedroom matches what the septic tank is capable of on the septic tank permits? So we don't have a septic tank that was built for a two-bedroom house having four bedrooms automatically, or somehow? And then, I'd like to talk about affordable housing. As you can see, we do have an affordable housing issue, and there's a thing called middle housing, where I think STR should be banned from apartments, duplexes, mobile home parks. That's the next thing that's going to happen, is someone's going to come in and buy a mobile home park and kick everybody out and then turn it into STRs. Where are all these people going to go live? And then I'd like to make a comment about the person from Airbnb says that he likes, "I have no concern about people sharing their home or their residence." It's when they buy a house and rent it out as a motel room, that's when my concerns start. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Up next, Tony.
That is the end of my registered list. If you would like to testify, please use the raise hand feature, and I will call on you in the order received.
We had a couple of people who couldn't connect. Are they able to get back on? I know, I know, I know that. I have their cards.
Okay, good.
Thank you. Well, we're finishing this section, just a moment. Tony, there were some people who had connection difficulties. I think there were three. Are they able to come back?
I have reached out to those individuals directly and have not received any response from them.
Okay, I have three cards left for people in the room. Nancy Dougherty, Dougherty, please come forward, ma'am. Please sit down at the chair. And pull that microphone close so we can hear you. Please state your name or area of residence.
I'm Nancy Dougherty. I have lived on Mount Hood for 60 years, and I've taught school there for 30-some years. I have been a member of this community and have watched things happen to it. I feel as though the county is going in the wrong direction, and you should be trying to help our community to stay whole. We don't need weekend people coming up without buying a home, renting for a specific time or something like that. This daily thing is unreal for our community. I feel very badly for what I see. Thank you.
Thank you. Up next, Kent Delusney. Delusney, thank you very much.
Good evening. My name is Kent Delusney. My daughter and I own a home on Salmon River Road in Welchus that we use as a short-term rental. And I want to give the commission and the citizens present our commitment that we want to be good neighbors. We've had a little bit of a problem with the bears and the garbage, and we know we're going to have to make an investment in a bear-proof container, so that'll solve that. I want to applaud you for, I think, taking a reasoned approach to these regulations that you're proposing. I think we don't have any concern about registering, about complying with the safety regulations or paying a nominal fee for the administration. I think that the concern we have is the limitation of 12 resident, 12 renters. It's our belief that if the property, both the real estate and the house, can accommodate more than 12, and the parking is available, the limit of 12 seems somewhat arbitrary. That's the one piece of this chapter that I think we would recommend that you reconsider. But apart from that, we think that this is a reasoned approach, and we want to support the regulation of these short-term rentals. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Up next, Blythe Cook. Is that correct? Okay, thank you. Creek, please state your name, madam, and your area of residence.
Blythe Creek, and I've lived on the mountain for over 40 years. There weren't nightly rentals until 20 years ago, and the last decade, they have gone like that. So I'm concerned about, there's no place for young people wanting to get a house, no rooms that they can rent. I get asked three times a day, when I'm in my office, and it's a real estate office, "Where can I find a rental?" And I have to give them the best advice I can. I first decided to come up here, and Sarah Roberson took care of, there was a discrepancy with that, with the feeling that Timberline Rim had CCNRs, and we don't. They sunset it. And I'm concerned about fire danger. I'm concerned about the cars. I have a nightly rental next to me. I've worked out some things with the owner, and it's nice when you can, but sometimes it gets pretty hairy. And I've heard the stories from a lot of those people, that they're wanting to be able to have somebody. I'm a single woman. I would not want something posted if I decided to ever do that. And posting my name and my phone number, I totally am not in support of that. That was a very bad idea, and it needs to be solved another way. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you very much. I will now close the public hearing on short-term rentals. I'm just going to let you folks know what's happening. We have two more sections of the business meeting tonight. At 8:00, I intend to take a short, five-minute comfort break, commissioners, and promptly please come back within five minutes, and so we can resume the rest of the meeting. Commissioners, do we have any comments? I will entertain a motion.
Chair, before we make a motion, I can make one comment. Ladies and gentlemen, there's been a great deal of comments made tonight. We and the staff will take every comment, distill them down to identify the problems that you've stated, and then we'll look at those recommendations to see how we might modify the regulation between now and the next hearing. Thank you very much. Now, I'd like to make a motion to, I move, we read the ordinance by title only.
Second.
Commissioner Shaw has moved, we read the ordinance by title only. Commissioner Savas has seconded the motion. Commissioner West.
I hope you still have the opportunity to do some work on this. I think that it's not fully done. So a number of the concerns that were brought up tonight, I thought were quite valid and need a little bit more vetting and work. So I'm hoping that as we move forward, we have the opportunity to do that. If that's, is that what we're all thinking here on the dais, is that there's, or if we move forward title only, it's as written?
As I explained earlier, Commissioner West, this is the first public hearing where we invited people to come in and comment and give us an opinion on what the proposal is. And we could change the proposal, we could add something, alter it whatever way. Tonight, we will not be making those changes. Okay? I think, I personally think there's some things in here I don't like. I don't like names on the end of the driveway, or the mailbox, or the house. I'm not sure why that's there, and maybe I didn't understand completely when our attorney was reading that. We could go back and redo this and see what kind of alterations the commission has the will to make on it. Commissioner Savas.
Yeah, I appreciate all the comments, for those in the room and those online. I think some of the concerns that have been expressed, some of them are not relevant to the ordinance, but I appreciate that. We do understand that. Actually, we've heard that a lot of those over the number of years. The law does not allow us to discriminate between a STR operator-owner or the neighbor next door who's not. So we can't treat them really differently in the aspect of, you know, code enforcement or a number of things. So there's some technicalities with that. So we're trying to make sure we abide by the law, respect people's property rights. But to Commissioner West's concern, I think by reading the title, by ordinance only, we still have the opportunity to make the tweaks, as Chair Smith had alluded to, and legal counsel as well. So, let's not mistake him.
No, yeah, correct. And there were some folks that called in, especially online, who short-term rental ordinance may not apply to. The larger lodges-type situation, I'm not sure on that. So again, that is confusion, and I don't want folks to be confused on this. We do our best. We post all the materials online, we're as transparent as we can be on this, but sometimes people don't know where to get the information, and they just want to voice their opinions, and that is fine. So I do think we have a little bit of work to do on this, but with that in mind, Tony, please take the, oh, Paul.
Yeah, I just wanted to say, the other comment that was made, STRs are already legal. So we're not here making them legal or making them illegal. They're already allowed. So just wanted to make that statement.
Yep, that's an important statement. Tony, please call the poll.
Commissioner Schrader.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Savas.
Aye.
Commissioner Shaw.
Aye.
Chair Smith.
Aye, motion passes 5-0. Will the clerk please read the ordinance by title only and assign a number?
Ordinance 04-2023, an ordinance adopting Clackamas County Code, Chapter 8.10, short-term rentals.
Any further discussion? Do the commissioners have any proposed changes or amendments to the draft ordinance at this time? That's in my script. Commissioners, we will not entertain that tonight. We will be here all night discussing this. I suggest another policy session, or issues, or some other opportunity when we can bring back the concerns on this. The second reading of this ordinance will be Thursday, September 7, 2023, at the Board's regularly scheduled business meeting at 10:00 a.m. Thank you all who came and voiced your opinions. Gary, we're going to enter the next section of the meeting, and can we accomplish this next consent agenda by 8:00 p.m.?
Yes.
Okay, and I'm going to propose that we'll break then after the consent agenda.
Yes.
Thank you. Go ahead.
All right, next is the consent agenda. Tony, would you please read the consent agenda?
Clackamas County Consent Agenda. Elected Officials. Item 1, Approval of Previous Business Meeting Minutes for the Board of County Commissioners. Item 2, Approval of an Intergovernmental Agreement with Clackamas County Fairgrounds and Event Center to Provide Law Enforcement Services at the County Fair. Agreement value is $21,000. Agreement value is $21,500 for approximately 204 hours of service. Funding is through the Clackamas County Fairgrounds and Event Center. No county general funds are involved with the Clackamas County Sheriff's Office. Item 3, Approval of a Public Buddy Work Order Contract with DePaul Industries for Uniform Screening Services at County Justice Facilities. Contract value is $713,400 for one year. Funding through fees, fines, and $577,476 in budgeted county general funds with the Clackamas County Sheriff's Office. County Council. Item 1, Approval of an Intergovernmental Agreement with the North Clackamas Parks and Recreation District related to construction of the Oak Lodge Library. Total value is $21.5 million for library construction. Funding through library district revenue retained fund reserves, county ARPA funds, state ARPA funds, and $5.7 million in budgeted county general funds. Item 2, Approval of a Settlement Agreement with Clackamas County Sheriff's Office and Karen Sherman regarding employment litigation. Total value is $197,215. Funding through Clackamas County Sheriff's Office and county risk funds, which both include county general funds. Technology Services. Item 1, Approval of a Board Order Authorizing a Purchase Order for Adobe Enterprise Volume Licensing through a Cooperative Contract with Dell Marketing Limited Partnership. Purchase order value is $183,746 for a one-year term. Funding is through departmental cost allocation and direct departmental billing. No county general funds are involved. Health Housing Human Services. Item 1, Approval of Amendment 1, Increasing Funding to a Cooperation Agreement with Clackamas Service Center for the West Building Expansion Project. Amendment value is $300,000. Agreement value is increased to $950,000. Funding is through federal community development block grant funds, and no county general funds are involved. Item 2, Approval of a Public Improvement Contract with DeCarosiller Development Incorporated for the Clackamas Service Center Expansion Project. Contract value is $1,417,637 for six months. Funding is through federal community development block grant funds and Clackamas Service Center. No county general funds are involved. Item 3, Approval of a Personal Services Contract with DoGood Multnomah for Supportive Housing Case Management at Clayton Moore Commons. Contract value is $255,416.50 for one year. Funding is through Metro Supportive Housing Services Measure Funds. No county general funds are involved. Item 4, Approval of Amendment 2, Expanding the Scope of Work, Extending the Term and Increasing Funding of a Personal Services Contract with the Father's Heart Street Ministry for Emergency Shelter, Housing Navigation, and Placement Services. Amendment value is $2,779,692 for one year. Contract value is increased to $3,279,862 for two years. Funding is through Metro Supportive Housing Service Measure Funds and $382,425 in budgeted county general funds. Transportation and Development. Item 1, Approval of a Public Improvement Contract with JQ Construction Incorporated for the Tickle Creek 427th Avenue Culvert Replacement Project. Contract value is $399,970. Funding through county road funds. No county general funds are involved. Item 2, Approval of a Personal Services Contract with DK S. Associates Incorporated for the 82nd Drive and Jennifer Street Signal Replacement Project. Total contract value is $351,385.65. Funding is through county road fund. Insurance proceeds and fee in lieu of funds. No county general funds are involved. Item 3, Approval of Amendment 4 with Conso or North America Incorporated for the Stafford Road-Patula Way to Rosemont Road Improvements Project. Amendment value is $99,765. Total contract value is increased to $1,648,417. Funding through community road fund and countywide system development charges. No county general funds are involved. Item 4, Approval of a Personal Services Contract, Conso or North America Incorporated for Construction Engineering and Support and Inspection Services for the 2023 Transportation Maintenance Services Local Paving, Chip Seal, and Slurry Seal Projects. Contract value $230,580. Funding through House Bill 2017 and System Development Charge Funds. No county general funds are involved. Item 5, Approval of a Public Improvement Contract with Eagle Elsner Incorporated for the Malino Paving Package. Contract value is $1,912,000. Funding is through House Bill 2017 Road Fund. No county general funds are involved. Item 6, Approval of a Board Order and Quick Claim deed authorizing transfer of five parcels to Clackamas Water and Environment Services. No fiscal impact, no county general funds are involved. Madam Chair, that concludes the list.
Thank you, Tony. Is there any commissioner who wishes to remove anything from this consent agenda? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Chair, I move that we approve the consent agenda as read.
Second. Commissioner West has moved, we approve the consent agenda, and Commissioner Schrader has seconded that motion. Any further discussion? Seeing none, Tony, please take the poll.
Commissioner Savis.
Aye.
Commissioner Shaw.
Aye.
Commissioner Schrader.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Chair Smith.
Aye, motion passes 5-0. I will now recess as a Board of County Commissioners and convene as a North Clackamas Parks and Recreation District Board of Directors. Gary, what's next?
This is the consent agenda for the North Clackamas Parks and Recreation District. Tony, would you please read the consent agenda?
One item, Approval of an Intergovernmental Agreement with Clackamas County related to construction of the Oak Lodge Library. Total value is $21.5 million for library construction. Funding through library district revenue retained fund reserves, county ARPA funds, state ARPA funds, and $5.7 million in budgeted county general funds.
Thank you. Does any commissioner wish to remove anything from this consent agenda? I will entertain a motion.
Chair, I move, we approve the consent agenda as read.
Second.
Commissioner West has moved for the approval of the North Clackamas Parks and Recreation Consent Agenda, and Commissioner Savis has seconded the motion. Any further discussion? Tony, please call the poll.
Director Shaw.
Aye.
Director Schrader.
Aye.
Director Savis.
Aye.
Director West.
Aye.
Chair Smith.
Aye, motion passes 5-0. Thank you very much. I will now adjourn as a North Clackamas Parks and Recreation District and convene as Clackamas County Service District Number 5 Board of Directors. Gary.
This is the consent agenda for the Service District Number 5, Street Lighting District. Tony, would you please read the consent agenda?
One item, Approval of a Board Resolution Certifying the 2023 to 2024 Assessment Role for the Clackamas County Service District Number 5. Total assessment value is $2257,738.24. Funding is through the ratepayers. No county general funds are involved.
Thank you. Does any commissioner wish to remove anything off this consent agenda? Seeing none, Tony, please call the poll.
Motion.
I mean, excuse me, the motion.
I move for approval of the Service District Number 5 Consent Agenda.
Second.
Director Shaw has moved for the approval of Service District Number 5, and Commissioner Schrader has seconded the motion. Any further discussion? Seeing none, now we can have the poll.
Director West.
Aye.
Director Savis.
Aye.
Director Schrader.
Aye.
Director Shaw.
Aye.
Chair Smith.
Aye, motion passes 5-0. I will now adjourn as Service District Number 5 Board of Directors and convene as a Water Environment Services Board of Directors. Gary, what's next?
This is the Consent Agenda for Water Environment Services Board. Tony, would you please read the consent agenda?
Water Environment Services, four items. First item, Approval of a Personal Services Contract with Conso or North America Incorporated for Engineering Services to Design Improved Willamette Pump Station in Forest Main. Total contract value $1,174,772 for 3.25 years. Funding through Water Environment Services Sanitary Sewer Construction Fund. No county general funds are involved. Item 2, Approval of Amendment 2 to a Contract with Conso or North America Incorporated to Begin Phase 2 Final Design Work on the Intertie 2 Pump Station in Forest Main Expansion. Amendment value is $735,558.1 year. Total contract value increased to $1,836,266 over three years. Funding through Water Environment Services Sanitary Sewer Construction Fund. No county general funds are involved. Item 3, Approval of Amendment 1 to a Contract with Century West Engineering Corporation for Phase 2 Work to Be Performed on the Mount Talbert MTA Pipe Realignment Project. Amendment value is $163,560. Total contract value increased to $213,805 over 1.75 years. Funding is through Water Environment Services Sanitary Sewer Construction Fund. No county general funds are involved. Item 4, Approval of a Transfer of Five Parcels from Clackamas County. No fiscal impact, no county general funds are involved. Madam Chair, that concludes the list.
Thank you. Does any director wish to remove anything from this consent agenda? Seeing none, I will entertain a motion.
I move for approval of the Water Environment Services Consent Agenda.
Second.
Director Schrader has moved for the approval of the Water Environment Services Consent Agenda, and Commissioner Shaw has seconded that. Any further discussion? Seeing none, Tony, please call the poll.
Director Savis.
Aye.
Director West.
Aye.
Director Shaw.
Aye.
Director Schrader.
Aye.
Chair Smith.
Aye, motion passes 5-0. Thank you very much. I will now adjourn as a Water Environment Services Board and reconvene as a Board of County Commissioners. And that has ended all of our regular business. Up next is public communication, but since there are so many people in the room, we're going to take a five-minute recess, and we will come back. We will start at 10 minutes to 8:00. Thank you very much. Commissioner West. My goodness. Yeah, get young Ben here. Here we go. Okay. Let's reconvene the public comment portion of this meeting. Ladies and gentlemen, this portion... We will now convene the public comment portion of this meeting. It's limited to items of county business which are properly the objective or consideration, and should be nonpartisan in nature, as the BCC is a nonpartisan governing body under Oregon-revied statutes and county code. Testimony is limited to three minutes. Comments shall be respectful and courteous to all. As a reminder, you can email submissions for public communication at bcc@clackamas.us, and these will be accepted as part of the public record. I will now open the meeting for public testimony. I will take in-person testimony first. I have a bunch of cards here tonight on various topics. I did have one request, because a person needs to leave because of driving. Joe Haverkamp, please come forward. State your name, your area of residence, and you have three minutes.
Hello, Chair and Commissioners. Thank you, I'm Joe Haverkamp, and I live in Oregon City. Y'all look so perky tonight, after all that sitting and quiet and listening. I came because I don't agree with the DEI. I don't think they should pass it. That's $840,000. $840,000, and then if you add some maybe more employee, that could be over $1 million. And I just don't agree with that, and I came here. And I've been in your shoes before, because when I was served as a city councilor, we had to get in some sticky situations. You're just smiling there.
Thank you for that.
But y'all get along so well, and I think it's really nice that we have a really good commission. I mean, this is, you know, I've been to so many of these changing of the guards, new officers and everything, and I wanted to welcome Ben West. I think you have such a qualified man. Of course, he's a nurse, so he would be ahead. Because myself, I retired after 35 years. And I've been in politics, helping in politics for, I'd say, 50 years. And so I think that we really are lucky to have all of you commissioners, and I know that you have, all of you have difference of opinions, and I think that, but I don't feel, I know I've heard so many complaints from people, from the public, they're not in here. And they are just so upset about it. They don't want this. And I think it is, I don't think it's fair to every one of the citizens. And so I'm going to make it short, because you guys got to get out of here tonight. So thank you very much. Keep up the good work. Bye.
Thank you, Joe. Up next, Paul Edgar. Please come forward, state your name, your area of residence, and sir, you have three
Thank you, County Commissioner. My name is Paul Edgar. I live in Oregon City. The reason why I'm here is tolling, and our transportation infrastructure, and how can we pay for it? There's a lot of recommendations and a lot of crazy things that are happening, but somehow we've got to have a funding stream. And I had an opportunity to talk to a previous mayor, Dan Fowler, in a conversation about potentials of how we could fund it. He brought up an idea, and I forwarded it on to you people, but it was about putting a fee onto utility bills and using this as a method, because tolling has an operating cost of about 40%. So if you have $100, $40 goes away to a third-party vendor when they collect that money. That's ridiculous, and it's unacceptable. And so we need to come up with some methods that are reasonable, that actually, when you start taking money out of our pockets, out of the public's pockets, and we're burning it, that's not right. So I recommended to the president of the state senate to take a look at this and flesh out this idea. But I also included in some documentation on TriMet. TriMet's losing approximately $10 million a month right now. That's unacceptable. And the leadership of TriMet and transportation don't know what to do and are effectively doing nothing. That brings in concern, do we have people with intelligence running the show? Because if they're letting $10 million a month go down the drain, and we need to revisit transport in every way, what we're doing, how we're doing it. I come out of business automation, moving packets of data, creating systems that allow us to do things more efficiently. That was my life for 45, 50 years. What I see in the way we try to solve congestion is to toll it with the idea that somebody's going to ride a bus. Come on, folks. No one's riding the bus, bus track. We don't have light rail. What can we do? So they just really want to take our money and do nothing with it.
Thank you very much, Paul, coming forward. Up next, Shirley O'Farrell. Thank you. Please state your name, your area of residence, and you have three minutes.
Hi, my name is Shirley O'Farrell. I live in the Milwaukee area.
Madam, would you please pull your microphone closer?
Okay, thank you. Shirley O'Farrell, I live in the Milwaukee area. I've never done this before, and I hope I'm not offensive to anyone. I'm here because I don't agree with the DEI funding and their ideology. I'm just going to read this, because it's just kind of my ideas, and I just like to express them. First of all, I want to say that I don't believe in systemic racism. I'm a registered nurse, and that systemic means that it's throughout the whole body. And I think it's very presumptuous for someone to think that they can read the hearts of somebody else's heart in another person. I think the generalization is ridiculous and probably made up by Democrats. And I mean, I know that Democrats like the policy of equity and diversity. I believe it is simply to get their vote. Do we, as Republicans, want to go along with that hypocrisy? And I really feel the money can be used for more important issues in the Clackamas County. One of the most horrendous and disgusting issues was and still is slavery. And there are still many women and children that are still in slavery today. And there are still many women and children that are still in slavery today. And there is sex slavery in this county. And I think the money could be well-used for, to fight this epidemic, really. Right now, crossing the border, children are being fostered and picked up by actually people who are in the sex trade. That's just been discovered, and they're trying to correct that. So the other reason, the other reason I object is I think the money could be used for alcohol and drug treatment program. I was a detox nurse at Hooper Center. And the Oregon laws, we have now enabled drug addicts and alcoholics. I hear frequently that we have a mental health problem. What I think is we have an addiction problem. Let me assure you as a psychiatric nurse that most mental health clients are not violent, but give them drugs and alcohol, and absolutely they will be. Also, drug addicts and alcoholics may exhibit signs of mental health, like delusions and hallucinations. Methamphetamines can cause that. And when they get sober, these symptoms disappear. So I just, you know, I think it gets pushed on, the fact gets pushed on, this is a mental health problem. No, this is more of an addiction problem.
Thank you, ma'am. I appreciate it very much. Up next, Eric Johnson. Please state your name, area of residence while he is coming up. I decide, why don't we do two at a time? Amy Reiner, you can come up while he's testifying. Thank you.
My name is Eric Johnson. I'm the founder and executive director of a nonprofit that serves rural Clackamas County. And Totasuntos is the name of my nonprofit. And Totasuntos would like to express gratitude to the Clackamas County Children, Family and Community Connections for twenty years of support to include being part of the PreventNet family. PreventNet only, not only has provided financial resources over the years, but also provided a valuable networking opportunity to PreventNet partners and other county services, service providers, to enhance prevention intervention program service supports. Through the PreventNet network, youth and families we serve have benefited by a wide variety of prevention intervention trainings, crucial in our efforts to provide highly impactful mentoring programming, substance abuse awareness, and instructional techniques aimed at youth with social, emotional, and academic support needs. Totasuntos began as a culturally-specific organization providing services in 2000 at the Malala and Camby Middle School, serving an estimated 150 to 200 Hispanic youth. Around 2003, PreventNet, United Way, and other funders contracted with us to expand and provide services to all youth, thus opening the doors to become a whole community partner, now serving over eighteen hundred youth and families in the communities of Camby, Malala, Sandy, and Estacada. Totasuntos is located in nine schools to include Camby Baker Prairie Middle School, Malala River Middle School, Malala Elementary School, Sandy Cedar Ridge Middle School, and the Estacada Clackamas River and River Mill Elementary Schools and the Estacada Middle and High Schools. Totasuntos is a large menu of tested as effective best practice in school and after-school activities in the summer of activities that I believe Tony might have given you.
Yes, we have that. Thank you.
A large part of our success falls back on our partnership with PreventNet as we now have full-time, school-based site managers, managers in all nine schools mentioned. We have donated office space in the schools as well as in-kind use of school facilities to include use of soccer fields, cafeteria, and classroom space to hold our student-led activities, as well as access to synergy, a school database on student achievement and referrals. We are a school sanctioned program and a model for after-school programming in rural Clackamas County. If time allows, I invite you in any, I would, I invite you to any and all of our sites for your perspective and support. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Amy Reiner, correct. Please state your name, area of residence, and you have three minutes.
Thank you. My name is Amy Reiner, and I'm from Damascus. Today, I stand before you to express a perspective that is often deemed controversial. Evidence shows that there are many potential drawbacks to overemphasizing diversity, equity, and inclusion, even in the context of government. While the principles of DEI are undoubtedly well-intentioned, it is essential to critically examine DEI implications for government institutions. I also believe it is also crucial to acknowledge recent research that reveals the pursuit of DEI often leads to unintended negative consequences. The Harvard Business Review wrote an article titled "Why Diversity Programs Fail." One of the key objectives of DEI investments is trying to more or less ban bias and biased thinking in the workplace. Any positive effects of diversity training rarely last beyond a day or two, and the number of studies suggest that it can activate bias or spark a backlash. An excess focus on DEI can foster division rather than unity. By emphasizing individual categories of identities, there's a risk of highlighting differences and creating an us-versus-them mentality within the government organization. This can hinder collaboration and teamwork, which are essential for the successful implementation of policies that benefit the entire society. At a time where national cohesion is paramount, we must be cautious about the measures that might inadvertently exacerbate divisions. Furthermore, DEI initiatives can potentially breed resentment undermining mediocrity. When individuals perceive that they have been chosen or promoted solely due to their demographic characteristics, it can erode morale and discourage the pursuit of excellence. This could lead to decrease in motivation and productivity among employees, ultimately affecting the quality of services provided by the government to its citizens. Clackamas County is not a corporation with billions in profit. Those companies easily throw a few million around in DEI and call it off as another business expense. But here in Clackamas County, how often have we said no to people and projects that can make a real tangible difference? At the last Commissioner meeting, I heard discussed a ten-year price tag for the DEI program, and it was around $10 million. Could $10 million help you Commissioners say yes to boosting public health and mental health crisis? Could it help with the homelessness crisis? Could it fund law enforcement to increase public safety? DEI efforts are complex, expensive, and research shows the return on investment is not only low, but it could also be less than zero, resulting in a loss of progress we've already made towards diversity in the workplace. So I ask you Commissioners to vote against the DEI funding in Clackamas County and keep our funding focused on core government services. Thank you.
Thank you. Up next, Tara Wilson. Up next, Tara Wilson and Jacqueline Arnn. Please come up together. Tara Wilson. Nelson, Tara Nelson and Jacqueline Arnn. Thank you. Go ahead. State your name, your area of residence, and you have three minutes.
Tara Nelson, Damascus. "The chief business of the American people is business," President Calvin Coolidge once said. "One hundred years later, Americans' chief business increasingly is managing racial and sexual politics through the ideology of diversity, equity, and inclusion." No doubt, some of these programs are benign. Many companies adopt DEI policies out of pressure to conform. Other companies, however, use DEI to promote the most virulent strands of critical race theory and gender ideology. One factor that drives corporate executives, government offices, and others to adopt DEI programs are these initiatives serves as an insurance policy against frivolous race and sex discrimination lawsuits. The legal department can point to the mandatory trainings and policies as evidence that the company is doing something to prevent discrimination. DEI programs cost serious money, but there's no evidence they work, and some evidence that make things worse. Through diversity trainings that have been around in one form or another since the sixties, few of them have ever been subject to rigorous evaluation, and those that are mostly appear to have little or no positive long-term effects or met basic quality benchmarks. With the message that diversity training is likely the most expensive and least effective diversity program around. Many popular contemporary DEI approaches often seem geared more towards sparking a revol- a revolutionary re-understanding of race relationships, relations than solving organization-specific problems. These are never about true diversity, true equity, and true inclusion. People who don't fit the beguileous progressive's idea of a demographic in need of special treatment don't count. DEI cannot fail. It can only be failed. When it doesn't work, the only solution then is more DEI, more training, and more consultant money. And only a fool would dare to question any of these in the workplace, given how the stain of being thought of as a racist would harm one in the workplace. Rather than make relationships between racial groups more congenial, they make one group more suspicious and afraid of the other group. In actual practice, the diversity-inclusion aspect of DEI is actually exclusionary and promotes lack of diversity. DEI does not support or encourage diversity on viewpoints on nonpartisan subjects. DEI silences or vilifies those in perspectives in workplaces that don't fit the DEI box, which is supposedly committed to inclusion of all, yet it limits free speech. Furthermore, DEI training and guidelines implemented by companies are simply a means to improve reputation, safeguard against claims of discrimination, appeal to those on one side, or satisfy certain financial institutions that rank companies based on environmental, social governance, ESG factors. DEI places a focus on identifying signifiers instead of the merit, achievement, or ability by focusing on inclusion within a specific group rather than on individuals. It's the opposite of the dream of Martin Luther King Jr. and any parent today that my children will one day live in a nation where they will not be judged by the color of their skin, but by the con- content of their character. Thank you.
Thank you. Jacqueline Arnn, go ahead. You have three minutes.
Jacqueline Arnn, Beaver Creek. And I have attended the DEI trainings through an employer. I attended the trainings as a preschool teacher. And DEI teaches you to see color. I was told I had. I had to see color when I looked at the children that I was a teacher home visitor for. Here is what I saw. I saw God's masterpieces made in His image. We misnomer the term white. This paper is white. We are all shades of brown. Also, the DEI trainer told me I couldn't understand people who were not like me in skin color due to my so-called white privilege. Many memories ran through my mind, but I will only share one example tonight. It was my white privilege that allowed me to work five part-time jobs as I attended college, finishing my four-year Bachelor of Science degree in just over three years. Plus, after graduation, I paid my college loan off. What I call it is my privilege to be an American, raised by parents who taught me the work ethic. Thank you.
Up next, Linda Gordon and Gloria Montes. Go ahead and state your name, your area of residence, and you have three minutes.
Thank you. My name is Linda Gordon, and I am from Milwaukee. Madam Chair, Commissioners, Staff, I have no argument with diversity. We all recognize that we are a diverse community. I have no argument with the concept of inclusion unless it's being manipulated as a political weapon. I do have concerns about the weaponization of the term equity, which is distinct from the word equality. English definition in the Oxford Dictionary says equality is the state of being equal, especially in status, rights, and opportunities. Everyone is treated exactly the same regardless of difference. Equity, however, recognizes that each person has different circumstances and allocates the exact resources and opportunities needed to reach an equal outcome. At the August one, 2023 Commission Session where you had a discussion and submission from the sta- staff, there were discussions included about the core concepts of government. I was excited to hear that because I'm familiar with those as well. I was reminded of the main characteristics of, that are the top three most important principles of government that are, that were built on. Equality, which I've just defined, democracy, ruled by the people by a majority, and liberty, free from government restrictions imposed by authorities. And that the four basic functions of government are to maintain order, provide services, provide security, make economic decisions, and you all deal with those things. Quoting from the article that I found in the Clackamas Review on that August first meeting, County Commissioner Gary Schmidt, and please, I'm not going to malign you because I have some applause for you as well, publicly revealed his plan to restructure the DEI programs. I was here. I listened. I wanted to know what the plans going forward were for this commission. Once again quoting, however, from the Clackamas Review article, "For Schmidt, EDI in concept, if not in name only, is a core county service worth being funded, even if some elected board members aren't willing to fund it." Under Chapter Two of the County Code, Schmidt said, excuse me for not saying mister, but I'm quoting, "I have the authority to make those structural organizational changes, so I don't need your vote of approval or rejection." My question now is, Madam Chair, Commissioners, are we holding these meetings to get input from the community either for or against?
Thank you very much. I appreciate.
And I will submit the rest of my testimony.
I was neglectful when I introduced you, Representative Flores. You were a state representative representing House District 51 way back when I was in the legislature and we served together.
Way back, machine.
Yes, and I thank you for your service and your testimony today.
Thank you.
Up next is Gloria Montes.
Gloria Montes from Camby, Oregon. So first, I'd like to thank the Board for the work that you guys do and the thoughtful comments and perspectives that each of you has shared. I appreciate you making such a grand effort to be good stewards of our taxpayer money and putting in effort to use every penny wisely. I wish I could have found like the itemized expenditures for the EID money to see exactly how those funds have been used, but I wasn't able to find it in the, you know, seven-hundred-and-fifty-page budget document. I don't think they're available to us, those details. Anyways, okay. I do support to remove the EID funding from our county budget. I believe EID teaches that our society is systemically racist and fosters victimhood. It's not inclusive, and it comes with many negative unintended consequences. Just in this room alone, there is so much diversity within all of our families, that extended families. If you look at just the Board of Commissioners alone, you see a lot of diversity of their families. I believe that the world and our county is a melting pot, and that by far and large, most all people are loving and accepting of all individuals, regardless of their outward appearance, coun- country of origin, or sexual orientation. We do have differences of opinions, but that does not equal hate, prejudice, or unfair bias. I acknowledge there are wrongs that have occurred in, in our past, and, and some happen today, and there will always be room for improvement. But I do not see how omitting an entire group that's not considered a protected class brings us together. Just one last comment is during the last meeting, Commissioner West took some heat for a statement saying that EDI promotes left-wing ideology. And for those that scoffed at that remark, I would urge them to do their own research to trace back origins of diversity, equity, and inclusion to find the main umbrella that it does fall under. And you'll find that he made a factual statement. It was not him calling anyone names or labeling people.
Thank you very much. Up next is Rebecca Hargraves and Abby Wells. Please come forward. Please state your name, your area of residence, and you have three minutes. Go ahead, ma'am.
Hello, I'm Abigail Wells, and I live in Toowallatin. Good evening, Chair and Commissioners. My name is Abigail Wells. I'm the Prevention and Community Public Health Department Manager at Northwest Family Services. Addiction is often an adolescent-onset illness. A 2020 study showed that nine out of ten adults with a substance use disorder began using before the age of eighteen. The fact has huge implications for prevention and early intervention. If we can delay the onset of heavy substance use among young people, we can avoid some of the long-term social and public health impacts of addiction. By implementing evidence-based best practices, we can make a difference while saving high societal costs. Every one dollar invested in substance use prevention programs will result in savings of between two and $20. With continued assessment and evaluation, the power of prevention to meet the needs of a community can be realized. At Northwest Family Services, I oversee a Drug-Free Communities Coalition called Vibrant Future Coalition. Some of the things we do are naloxone trainings and distribution, youth summer camps, classroom presentations on things like vaping and fentanyl, co-advised a unit- presentations on things like vaping and fentanyl, co-advice the unity club that does prevention work in the schools, parent youth prevention nights, run a Latinx parent group, work on policy change at the local county and state level, attend resource fairs and other community events to pass out prevention information and resources such as lock boxes, drug dissolving bags, alcohol locking tops, et cetera, host speakers and documentary screenings, set up retail marijuana safety stations, and many other prevention-related initiatives. Our department also oversees PreventNet. PreventNet Community Schools is a school-based service system designed to improve outcomes for children, youth, and their families. Prevention and early intervention services in local schools include addressing poor academic performance, truancy, family management problems, alcohol and other drug use, poverty, homelessness, and negative peer association. The positive outcomes are the result of the collaboration between Clackamas County, the school, and local nonprofits Totas Santos and Northwest Family Services. We'd like to thank you for funding this program. At Northwest Family Services, we have a prevention specialist that offers many services within four schools in the county. First, she works with a caseload of at least 10 students at each of the assigned schools in order to provide case coordination and screenings. She also develops goals and an individualized support plan for each of the assigned students and their families. She provides evidence-based prevention classes at each of the assigned schools. Finally, she provides prevention trainings to small groups. These are just a few of the many responsibilities the prevention specialist takes on. Finally, we want to thank you for already funding prevention. With the opioid settlement dollars, we recommend additional funds go towards prevention in the county.
Thank you very much, and you can send the rest of your testimony from email. Rebecca.
Hi, my name is Rebecca Hargraves, and I've been working with Northwest Family Services as a PreventNet prevention specialist for three years now. Throughout these years, we have supported youth in Clackamas County middle schools through the pandemic and difficult life changes. When nearly all of the funding for the PreventNet program was cut in 2021, schools and the youth and families they served were devastated. Services to over 200 at-risk youth and their families were lost. Since then, as the last member of PreventNet, my caseload has always been full. Between myself and school counselors, we have seen a frightening increase in youth behavioral and mental health issues. There is simply not enough support for our community right now, and youth and their families are struggling. I have helped many families with finding resources to meet basic needs. I've coached parents through understanding their child's concerning thoughts and behaviors and supported them every step of the way to find more help. These past few years have been difficult, but I know I have stopped youth from risky and life-altering behaviors like self-harm, suicide, fights with peers, running away from home, early sexual activity, and drug use. Because youth trust me and feel like they can talk to me about anything without me being angry or judgmental, they will come to me when they are upset or curious about doing certain risky activities. We can talk through the risks together and make plans to keep them safe. Through building trusting relationships with youth, we have been able to change lives. Let me give you some examples of when youth trusted me enough to turn to me when they needed help. First, there are Isaac and Ronnie, and these are fake names for anonymity. With both these youths, I was able to work with them from sixth grade and see them through eighth grade graduation. Ronnie and Isaac both had parents who were immigrants from Mexico and only spoke Spanish. Their parents struggled financially, and I supported their parents in finding resources to make ends meet and get culturally appropriate mental health services. Ronnie struggled with suicide ideation, disordered eating, and conflicts at home and school. Through our relationship, I supported him through experiencing thoughts of suicide, his parents separating, and health issues. By the end of our time together, he was taking initiative to go to therapy and taking medication to help his mental health, and his overall health and social life was blossoming. Isaac also experienced his parents separating even after, and even after he graduated eighth grade, he reached out to me during the summer when he was experiencing his first heartbreak and had a plan for suicide. He knew I would make time for him and support him, and I did. We were able to create a safety plan and get him mental health services immediately. Despite Isaac and Ronnie both having parents struggle with substance abuse, through our mentorship, they never used drugs. With multiple events of suicide ideation, neither of them ever attempted or even self-harmed. Through programs like PreventNet, we are able to reach families when they truly need support. If we have more funding and staff for this program, we will be able to support more youth like Ronnie and Isaac with finding hope, healthy coping skills, support for their families, and most importantly, always having a trusted adult when they need it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Up next, Melinda Peetz and Renell Muro. Go ahead, state your name, your area of residence, and you have three minutes.
Hi, my name is Renell Muro. I'm from Canby. I appreciate the opportunity for this community input. I would like to express my support for the possibility of the Commissioners to decrease or remove the bloated and unnecessary DEI expenditures from the county budget. As was explained in last week's meeting, there are six state laws and six federal laws the county must follow to prevent discrimination. The county must also demonstrate compliance of those laws to receive state and federal dollars. Those 12 laws are enough to help Clackamas County to thrive, grow, and attract a diverse and talented group of people. This can be achieved without using our limited resources. Furthermore, I don't feel that DEI encourages fairness. It brings tension to the workplace, and worst of all, it is degrading to a new hire and causes them to doubt their skills. We all have personal stories, and everyone deserves to be treated respectfully and fairly because they are humans, not because of skin tone, gender, or sexual orientation. Financial prudence, respect, and fairness is the right direction for our county. Please support fiscal responsibility. Please uphold equality, not equity. Thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead, please, ma'am.
Hi, my name is Melinda Peetz. I live in Oregon City. I'm a native Oregonian. This morning, I took the time to listen to the public comments from last Thursday morning's meeting. I was moved by the many unique perspectives and experiences from voices in our county. As Commissioner Ben West summarized his thoughts, he spoke from a very relevant and personal experience as a man. His story embodies everything that DEI stands for. From my perspective and a 20,000-foot view, we live in the most diverse, inclusive, and equitable nation in the world. From a 1,000-foot view, I understand that we are all diverse individuals having unique skills and talents to bring into the workplace and community. As such, there is a long history of training brought into the corporate, non-corporate work environment. This is a discussion of the county budget for training of employees and not necessarily the general public at large, right? This isn't about devaluing who we are or telling you how to live your life. The budget-enhanced training assumes everyone has a behavior issue that promotes division, exclusivity, inequality, and marginalization, as the following article summarizes. "The introduction of diversity training has been a double-edged sword. It's offered opportunities for people of color to advocate for more inclusive workplaces, but instead of identifying the specific hierarchies of power and legacies of structural racism, diversity initiatives often emphasized as supposedly colorblind celebration of diversity detached from power and history." History teaches us that we've been trying the same old solutions, ignoring the fact that training seminars were never intended to solve racism. They were intended as human resource interventions at organizations concerned about interpersonal conflicts stemming from diverse workforces. In Clackamas County, do we really need a budget of over $800,000 to train a workforce of county employees to work among a diverse people group, to hire on merit and not race, to collaborate through unique skills and not lifestyle, to lead by experiential history and not because of DEI mandates? When will society stop highlighting personal differences in the name of DEI and start embracing an individual for what they offer an employer, or an educator, or leadership, or governmental implementers, et cetera? DEI highlights difference more than embracing it as a quality of character. America from its beginning promoted these ideals stated in its founding documents. It has historically been diverse, inclusive, and equitable to recognize the simple fact that all humans are created equal, yet it's institutions of power that create imbalance. DEI training will not solve that at the county level, right? That's all.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Up next is Colleen Hamilton and Jani Nakano. Please come forward, state your name, area of residence, and you have three minutes.
Hi, my name is Jani Nakano. I live in Oregon City. Mine's kind of short, but it's my first time doing this ever, so I'd just like to say good evening and thank you for giving us this time. DEI is a political activism, and it should have, it should have no place here in our county. The funding of diversity and equity and inclusion would be a gross misuse of our tax dollars. Your hard-working families of Clackamas County do not need this. We already have standards here in Clackamas. People should be treated equal, and the best person for the job should be hired. DEI is a cancer of toxic policies.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Colleen Hamilton, and I live in Oregon City. Thank you for allowing me to speak here tonight. EDI, DIE, or DEI programs, whatever we call them, cost a huge amount of money and time to develop, to just pass them on from department to department. For what, a biased ideology? I have not had any dealings with the county, state, or federal DEI programs. However, I have worked with a lot of school districts, and it is ridiculous the massive amount of paperwork those districts send out to get out their DEI programs. Political agenda. Take, for example, the survey put out by the Oregon City Superintendent of Public Schools in February 2023 regarding the issue of displays in schools. The survey was emailed to the superintendent, by the superintendent, to parents in that specific school district to ask the parents' opinions about displays, including flags in public areas of the school. The first page is the Survey for Guidance for Displays in Common Areas. It states that, and I quote, "The rules for any display require that the display may not be defamatory, biased, or prejudicial against any individual or protected class." Now, my questions are, who is the protected class? Who decides who belongs in the protected class? Who are the stakeholder groups that could be impeached, or excuse me, impacted by this protected class? And who chooses those stakeholders? The main survey with references is 69 pages, I have that 69 pages printed here, with the myriad of links for parents to read. It was over 120 pages long. Those links came straight from the Oregon Department of Education's DEI program. My point is not about this survey. My point is that this is exactly what a bureaucracy does. They build huge documents about their programs and pass those documents from one department to the next, to the next. Then they train the employees about how to use the programs, all the while spending taxpayers' money on EDI programs that are equitable, not equal, divisive, not diverse, and inclusive, but inclusive, inclusive only to the people the program chooses to include. Clackamas County could do much better with a strategy to work with the departments to develop standards that do not come from a Marxist ideology. Golden rule standards could be more effective. Commissioners, you can do better.
Up next, Dana Hamilton, excuse me, Dana Hindman Allen, beg your pardon, and Shelley Go ahead. State your name, your area of residence, and you have three minutes.
Hello, my name is Dana Hindman Allen, and I'm from Sandy. I appreciate being able to weigh in on this very important issue. I think we can all safely agree that no one wants to be marginalized. No group does. Some feel that inclusiveness is not being given enough attention, whereas others feel if the DEI program moves forward, it may end up marginalizing other groups and have a divisive effect. I feel there are far more productive and cost-effective ways to address these concerns. I believe the longer we put ethnic components on everything, the longer it will take to heal historical wounds. Under current federal law, the Equal Opportunity Commission that states that it is illegal to discriminate against job applicants or employees based on color, religion, race, sex, including pregnancy-related conditions, gender identity, and sexual orientation. Please ask yourself if DEI will stand the test of time against current federal law if it is misused. I feel that there are far more constructive solutions that would include educating staff on their current options should a complaint be brought to Human Resources in response to a workplace offense. If there are additional ongoing concerns regarding the workplace environment, the Bureau of Labor and Industries may be utilized. Extreme circumstances of civil rights violations could be addressed through existing legal channels. Included in the current format of the Core Values and Mission Statement of Clackamas County, there is some language present that is intended to preserve the equality of all citizens. I believe that if some citizens do not agree with everything, they can form a committee and successfully amend the current mission statement to ensure a workplace environment that is free from discrimination and the marginalization of any group of people within our communities. I also want to say we have current programs in place that are struggling here. Actually, some of the most inclusive programs in this county are the Parks Department, and the Parks Department cannot get on the general budget. That is a place where communities can gather and have positive experiences and positive outcomes and share thoughts and ideas as community members. I appreciate your time. I think this DEI should not move forward because I believe that it will cause more damage than good. Thank you so much.
Up next, Shelley.
Hello, my name is Shelley Tim. I live in Milwaukee, specifically in the Oak Grove area, and I appreciate having the opportunity to speak. I would like to address very specifically the definitions of the words equity and equality. According to the National Association of Colleges and Employers, the term equity refers to fairness and justice and is distinguished from equality. Whereas equality means providing the same to all, equity means recognizing that we do not all start from the same place and must acknowledge and make adjustments to imbalances. The process is ongoing, requiring us to identify and overcome intentional and unintentional barriers arising from bias or systemic structures. According to CollinsDictionary.com, equality is the same status, rights, and responsibilities for all the members of a society, group, or family, the condition of being equal, especially of having the same political, social, and economic rights. Synonyms of the word equality are equivalency, sameness, justice, fairness, impartiality. By definition, equity ensures that there is discrimination written into the system. Equity puts groups of individuals who are labeled by their skin color, sexual orientation, or a myriad of other classifications ahead of other groups who are not socially labeled thusly. Who decides which groups deserve equity? What happens if politics shifts in some way and the group that you are labeled in is equitable suddenly doesn't fit into the groups who are discriminantly put forward above others to receive favored treatment? Equity removes the qualities of excellence and merit. It removes competition from jobs and schooling. How does one strive for competence and excellence in work if you do not get a job according to your ability and qualifications but instead are hired solely on a classification that you are born with and did not have to work for? Equity breeds mediocrity and removes hard work and excellence from any equation. Equity ensures that our great constitutional republic will decline into mediocrity by the intentional discrimination promoting some groups while demoting others. On the other hand, equality means every person is treated exactly the same by definition. Equality is written into the Constitution of this great country. Equality encourages competition, fairness, and a desire to excel. Equality does not discriminate. Equity discriminates by definition. I implore you, do not add the word equity or promote its ideals to any program in this county, and please do not fund it.
Thank you very much. Up next, Patrick Clayson and Rick Riley. Please come forward. Go ahead. State your name, your area of residence, and you have three minutes.
Rick Riley, Damascus. Good evening, Commissioners. Good to
Good evening, Commissioners. Good to see you again. I've been watching these meetings regarding equity, diversity and inclusion. And it appears that almost every argument, either pro-EDI or against EDI, has already been heard. What I'd like to reiterate is due to the Supreme Court decision last month that ruled against affirmative action in higher education, EDI programs are being discontinued all over the country in both governmental and private sectors. It's been noted that entities could actually be held liable for EDI programs and policies as equity and diversity are mutually exclusive and almost impossible to achieve equally and fairly. Clarence Thomas, a black man, didn't need EDI to achieve his position as the Supreme Court Justice of the United States. Neither did Barack Obama to become the most powerful person in the land as the President of the United States. But you know who did need EDI and received it? Corrine Jean-Pierre, the White House Press Secretary, who just last week declared herself a national historical figure. Why? Because she is the first black gay woman to hold that position. And those three distinctions that have made her a national historical figure have allowed her to show the world that she may actually be the least qualified person to ever hold that position. As Chair of the Clackamas County Republican Party, I've come to know the hearts and minds fairly well of all of our Commissioners. I know how Commissioner Scholl will vote as he's always been mindful of moral conservative values of our county. I know how Commissioner West will vote as I have come to know him to be of the same values as Commissioner Scholl. I know how Commissioner Schrader will vote as she is of liberal mindset. And unfortunately, I know how Commissioner Savis will vote. Because even though he came to our party for support in his reelection, which we wholeheartedly did everything we could to do that, he's turned his back on that party on major issues ever since he's occupied that commission chair. What I don't know is how Chair Smith will vote. And I'm hoping she'll remember our Declaration of Independence, which states, "We hold these truths to be self-evident, that all are created equal." And that statement alone is enough to sustain equality for everyone. Anything further is superfluous to a well-functioning, respectful, productive society. So let's quit checking off the boxes of color and special interests. And let's check, start checking into the merits of the people who have worked so hard to be qualified for their desires. EDI has no place in our county or in our society. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Patrick Clayson. I'm President, AskMe350-4. I live in Oregon City. I'm here continuing a conversation we've been having for, this is our fifth week now, around the, our ongoing negotiations with the cost of living adjustments. I know we can't direct bargain, but I am here to, I am here to talk to the county about assets. We, I hear a lot from the board talking about fiscal responsibility and having to balance ratepayers and taxpayers' money with, with how you run the government. Hundred percent appreciate all that. I do want to point out again, we have zero impact on the taxpayer. We are hundred percent ratepayer-based, so we're just talking ratepayers when I'm talking about Water Environment Services. When we go out and we purchase trucks or we purchase tools or we purchase infrastructure at Water Environment Services, that's paid with ratepayer money. That's an investment that the ratepayer pays every month when they pay their fees to the district. They're investing. That is all physical property that has public ownership. They invest money as well into the training and development of the skill sets of the employees at Water Environment Services. However, that is not public ownership. However, they do have a theoretical ownership in that. And I believe that the county has a responsibility to do what they can to try and retain that investment here at the county. I will not come up here in front of this board and argue that my employees or any employee here at this county should be the highest paid. I don't think we should. I think that'd be a fiscal irresponsible of this board. However, I think that we should be paid close enough to the top that we are competitive in nature with the surrounding districts that compete for the resource of employees. At this point right now, Water Environment Services is sitting back about 25 to 30% behind what the other districts in this area are paying their employees. That is a large enough gap that we have employees that are jumping ship. And when they jump ship, they take their skill sets, their knowledge with them. This board, this week in its policy session, just approved a pay increase for their two employees. I applaud that because the board sees that those employees have a vested skill set that benefits the constituents of this county, the citizens that live here. And you see a value to that. And you give those pay increases in order to entice those employees to stay here so that their pay continues to go up. So as other districts go up, they don't end up getting enticed to go somewhere else.
Thank you very much. Is there anybody else in the room, excuse me, who would like to testify, who has not filled out a blue card? Please do that now, sir. Place your blue card in the basket. Come forward. We will go to online testimony while you're doing that. Tony, do we have anybody online who would like to testify?
Madam Chair, we'll begin with Angela Nylund. Please state your name and area of residence. You have three minutes.
Good evening. Can you hear me okay?
Yep. Go ahead, Angela.
Good evening, Commissioners. I'm called in to say, please do not fund the DEI. We're all having to live within our means. And I appreciate the board focusing on not overspending our tax dollars and living within county means. DEI is divisive. Even the DEI or DEDI committee on the website there for Clackamas County makes it clear that there's, you know, there has to be a diverse group of people that can volunteer. Wow, if there's, I guess, you know, if there's another old lady there from Boring, maybe I don't qualify. You know, so I can't volunteer. It's kind of an odd situation. In my business life, I ensured my teams completed the required DEI-type training. And I had to answer to HR and upper management if it didn't get done. I believe that the county HR department can handle DEI training and issues for employees. They, they're a great group. I have faith that the managers and department heads and HR, if needed, are fully capable of handling any DEI issues that involves a public. So I don't, I don't see a reason, I consider it overspending to hire more people just specifically to focus on that. I think we've got that all covered. And if these people aren't able to handle, you know, issues that I described above, maybe they need more training and the county could save a bunch of money. And that's all I have to say. Thank you and have a great evening.
Thank you. Up next, Tony.
Madam Chair, that is the end of my registered list. If you would like to testify, please use the raise hand feature and I will call on you in the order received. I do not have any hands raised at this time, Madam Chair.
I have a couple more cards. Come forward, Jim Dever and Brian Eckler. Go ahead, sir.
My name is Brian Eckler. I am from the outer reaches of Clackamas County, Lake Oswego. I have a unique experience with this coming from the nonprofit's arts arena. And I participated in that primarily in Multnomah County. However, I did art shows all over the place, including Lake Oswego and Westland, these types of places. But one of my observations as this DEI was coming onboard way back before it was called that, is we had a sign posted in our gallery. And that sign said, "We welcome all sizes, all colors, all cultures, all sexes, all ages, all types of people." And almost every sign on the street, or excuse me, every store on the street had this sign. And I had a conversation with one of my more progressive colleagues. And I asked them, "When did we not accept those people?" Oddly enough, within a month, those signs started disappearing down the street. It was really just a fad. Nothing more than a statement that, hey, we're cool. And as it progressed, my art career progressed further. I got actual training in DEI. And it was always to me a fantastic thing. I love to be included. I love diversity. And who's going to really be against equity? I love all those things. But to me, it was always about opportunity. And in the arts, we were struggling. How do we get more people from underserved communities and yada, yada, yah? And they would talk about this. And I said, "Well, you have to go to those communities and offer them opportunity." That's it. It's simple. You don't have to have a big bloated budget. You just need to get the opportunities to the people who need them. And they'll take them if they want them. And they'll do with those opportunities what they can. And that's really the extent of it. That's where you create equality and equity, where those two intersect, opportunity. And I just wanted to say that I really appreciate everybody's testimony tonight and I'm proud.
Thank you very much. Up next. Jim, go ahead.
Thank you for allowing this. I was called here at the last minute, so I'm a little unprepared. But what a joy to be here. And listen, like you said, the wisdom coming out of this group tonight, speechless, and I won't repeat all the wonderful-
Please introduce yourself, sir.
I'm Jim Dever. Sorry, Jim Dever from Oregon City.
Thank you.
And forgive me for that. But really impressed with all the opinions. I won't repeat them all and waste that time. But I will say, it brought up a mind in a, out of the Oregonian years ago, there was a section called the Parade. And in the Parade, there was a lady, Marilyn Vas Savant, that wrote a column. It was called Ask Marilyn. This was 20 or 30 years ago. They asked her, "What's the greatest danger facing the world today?" And she said, "Allowing everybody to separate their group in the name of inclusion, African-American, Asian-American, gay-American." She said, "It's the worst mistake we could make. You are an American. You belong and nobody is less or more important than another person, but everybody matters a lot." And whether you're included or not depends on whether you get out of your comfort zone and make the world a better place. Everybody, I'm a firm believer, has gifts and talents. And you have to believe that. Get outside your comfort zone, use them. And if you do, and you make your boss's job easier because you're there and you make people's jobs better because you're present, you're going to be included. Your colors are relevant. So the DEI thing is separated. It's a separatist idea. I'm vehemently against it. And I'm also against people forcing me to pay. I don't know if it's coming through private dollars or tax dollars, but if it's coming through tax dollars, once again, I'm being forced to pay for an ideology I don't agree with. I don't ask anybody to pay for my ideologies. Why am I being forced to pay for theirs? And like I said, I get along with everybody in the world. I always have. One of my best friends growing up was LeVar Burton. I knew him through the eighth grade. He played Kunta Kinte in Roots. One of the smartest young men I've ever known. He was a straight A student. A black guy to me was a guy I wish I could be as smart as. He was intelligent with a great heart. And so it goes with the people I know. I don't care what culture they're from. I've done a lot of work in Mexico and Guatemala. Some of the most beautiful people in the world. Hate is everywhere. You have to decide which side of that you want to be on. And that means treating each other with respect. You get respect if you give respect. It's pretty simple. Don't judge by color or culture. Judge by character. It's pretty simple. And that's about all I'm going to speak on about. Thank you for the opportunity.
Up next, Ron Smith. You may be last, but not least.
Yeah, tough act to follow. This is my second time doing this. I'm Ron Smith.
I've seen you before, yes. And you have a great last name.
Thank you. Thank you. I appreciate that. I got something going for me. My name is Ron Smith and I live in Gladstone. I'm here to voice my opposition against the DEI. I've actually gone online and looked up President Biden's executive order because I'm still kind of confused as the definitions of diversity, equity and inclusion. So I went online and I just want to share what I came up with today just to see if it helps anybody else. The, according to the executive order by President Biden, the term diversity means the practice of including the many communities, identities, races, ethnicities, backgrounds, abilities, cultures and beliefs of the American people, including, it says, underserved communities. So I really like when it expresses the American people because I feel included in that. And the DEI, I think, has a segment of separation. So that's my point there. So it goes on to give the definition of equity. And it says that equity means the consistent and fair, just and impartial treatment of all individuals. Again, we're talking about American people, right? There's no separation. We're all equal in this sense. It says, "Including individuals who belong, again, to underserved communities that have been denied such treatment." I guess there's a question here as far as, again, I think somebody else has asked, "Who determines who the underserved communities are?" I know it may be obvious sometimes, but you can see how there might be a little bit of prejudice there or other things. So I just want to bring our attention to that. Then the last one, the term inclusion means the recognition, appreciation and use of the talent and skills of employees of all backgrounds. Again, we're talking about equality, right? We're talking about skills and the ability to earn those positions versus losing that position to somebody who's giving special favor. Let's see what time. Oh, not much time. So I wanted to kind of just propose something, you know? The whole idea of DEI, why don't we try something like the BIBLE, right? I think our moral compass today has kind of been thwarted. And so we really need to really examine our biblical values of our country today. And that's going to help us reset our moral compass because we're at a point today where right is wrong and wrong is right. So I think my time is about done. I appreciate your time. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. I will now close the public communication portion of this meeting. We have Commissioner Communication coming up. Gary, what would you like to say?
I'll skip my report tonight, Chair.
We will move directly to Commissioner Communication. First, Ben West.
I get to go first tonight, okay? I don't have a lot to say because we, I don't, that's a, that's a hard act to follow. A lot of, I believe, truth was spoke tonight in a very productive way. And so thank you for engaging with your government tonight. I know it's a school night and a lot of us have kiddos or have work to do in the morning. And you guys stayed through the long haul of an entire meeting. And so it is much appreciated. I will say this, though, is that I do firmly believe that we cannot remedy a past discrimination with modern future discrimination. And if you don't understand that difference, then you believe in equity. But if you believe in the Declaration of Independence, that all men are created equal. And if you believe that we are all children of God and created in His image and have value and worth and dignity because we're created in His image. And that you believe that we want to give our fellow neighbor the ability to have success and to link together as a community, then you believe in equality. And so I hope that those values start to go and flow deep in this county. I hope that we remember what merit, fairness, equality and colorblindness means. And we continue to promote those things. And those are the values that we stand on. Not ones that are rooted in political ideology, not ones that divide us, but ones that have already been proven through the test of time and throughout human history. already been proven through the test of time and throughout human history. I'm happy to serve you guys here in this county, and it's been a long night, but thank you again for coming and sharing your thoughts, your opinions, and your hearts with this commission.
Thank you. Commissioner Savas, you're up next.
Yep. Thank you, Chair. I appreciate all the comments, and I just wanted to say, I think, really, often, our values are really all the same, and I think they're, I don't disagree with Ben that, with Commissioner West, that past discrimination is past discrimination, but I think what we're faced with as a government, even as employers are, you know, discrimination in the workplace, discrimination today and discrimination tomorrow, it still exists out there whether we like it or not, and we have a responsibility, and if we don't address that responsibility, then as a government especially, and as we serve as commissioners for, we are ultimately responsible for that, and that means that if we fail, then we're writing checks and we're paying off lawsuits and so forth. So that's what we try to protect our government from, and unfortunately, we are still paying, we're still writing checks, and we still need to do our job and abide by the laws that are written. If we don't like the way the law is written, I think we need to, people need to think about how that, how they get involved to change that, but that's usually at the federal or state level, and typically here in this case, it's federal law. That's all I have for tonight, Chair.
Up next, Commissioner Schrader.
Yes, thank you all for coming this evening. It's always nice to see people from Cambie. I lived in Cambie for many years, and I still miss it, but I have a very nice place now, and I have to say that I did listen to everyone tonight. I appreciate your comments, but I've got four grandchildren to go home to who haven't visited me tonight for three years because of COVID and other issues getting here, so I really want to go home and see those kids, but, so I hope you appreciate the fact. I knew that this was an important meeting to hear your thoughts, so thank you for that. And I would want to mention one thing. I think that Commissioner West and I went to the National Association of Counties Conference, and we looked at a recovery center that they have pulled together in San Antonio, Texas. I think it's one of the best models for helping people move up the ladder out of addiction that I've ever seen, and with Commissioner Savas as well. I think we're all going to be working as a team to do that. So anyway, I'm excited about it. So that's all I have for tonight.
Thank you. Commissioner Scholl.
Yes, good evening, Clackamas County, and thank you all for coming and for your very valuable comments this evening. First, a couple administrative comments. Tomorrow, if you're interested in forestry, Oregon Department of Forestry will conduct a meeting to discuss a forest management plan that will affect harvest on 273,000 acres in 15 counties, including Clackamas County. The meeting's at 10 o'clock. You can see it at odf.org.gov to pick up the Zoom link. Next week, we expect a heat wave. If you have vulnerable neighbors, please check our Clackamas website under "Warm Weather Information" and see the list of cooling centers near you. On the Oregon Health Plan enrollment, if you have a family member who is on the Oregon Health Plan, make sure you talk to them about this. The Oregon Health Authority is sending out packets contacting OHP members for more income information to see if you still qualify for benefits. So if you have a loved one who receives a package from OHA, make sure it's returned in a timely manner so they don't lose their coverage. On taxation and the cost of government, now's the time--
--for counties to anticipate national factors that will influence our county's budget. It's still on. It's on. We think--
It's the 9:00 PM reboot. This is on my end. I'll get this sorted out here momentarily.
Is that normally at 9:00 PM?
Yes, ma'am.
Well, but how come they're not paying attention to us?
It is built into the system, ma'am. It's--
Turn your mics on.
Okay, good. We're back on again. Again, on taxation and the cost of government, now's the time for Clackamas County to anticipate national factors that will influence our county budget and our ability to provide county services. In 1980, the federal deficit was $59 billion, and the total federal debt stood at $914 billion. In that year, Ronald Reagan expressed concerns about the level of national debt, saying it was a shocking number. But Reagan's hope to achieve a balanced budget did not work out too well. For 2023, the Congressional Budget Office estimated in May that the federal budget deficit will be $1.5 trillion this year, about $160 billion larger than 2022. The national debt as of 1:00 PM today was $32.64 trillion. That's 36 times higher than 1980 when Reagan said those words. If the government wanted to balance its budget sheets, it would have to either permanently and immediately reduce spending or increase tax revenues. Three major drivers of our growing national debt are, one, demographics and our older population; two, the rising cost of health care; three, inadequate revenues because of overexpenditures. It would be one thing if our tax code was designed to fund all the promises the federal government's making, but it is not. So what does this mean to our county? Can we continue to depend on hundreds of millions of federal dollars that will help us provide services like health care, housing, and transportation? Next year is a presidential election year. Will we see a big course change in monetary policy in January 2025 with significant budget cuts? Property taxes that fund our county general fund operations may seem like a constant source of funding, but the ability of our residents to pay those property taxes is not, as other expenses, inflation, and federal and state taxes press their ability to make ends meet. Here at Clackamas County, we must recognize the trajectory this nation is on and act with foresight and prepare for leaner times ahead, and take action to reduce the shock factor that will come when those federal grant dollars dry up. The savings of every dollar now will help, a stitch in time saves nine. On EID, the county staff must concern itself with core services, not political ideology. The county needs to focus on ensuring that core services are made available to all citizens of the county with respect for equality and equal access for all in accordance with the Constitution, the Fourteenth Amendment, the 1964 Civil Rights Act, and other applicable laws. We already have the tools to help all our residents, and we can do it without an extra expense or another line item in the budget, equality in accordance with the law. I want to see that $827,000 saved from the FY23-24 budget because every dollar saved is going to put us in a better situation tomorrow to be able to afford to run this county. Without an EID department, I'm convinced in the professionalism of the staff of this county that they'll continue to do outreach to every citizen and grant support to nonprofits that will help communities in need. And finally, on a more fun note, next Tuesday, the greatest fair in America starts, the Clackamas County Fair, Tuesday morning, and starts with a parade and will run through next Saturday. Come and bring the kids. Just so you know, my favorite part of the fair is the chickens. I love the chickens, and they're always talking. The cows and the pigs are always asleep, but the chickens are always awake at the fair. Thank you very much.
Thank you. We have a lot of work to do. I want to thank all the people who came here tonight to testify and who are still here listening to us. Your comments have not fallen on deaf ears, just know that. We are doing a lot of work regarding statements about the budget. I've been, for the last nine months, preparing documents entitled "Core County Services," and I've been presenting those to my fellow commissioners, and I've gone back to 1843 when Oregon became a provisional state, and then statehood ensued in 1859, and they're listed, and it's been addition and addition as addition. The federal government tells us what to do. The state of Oregon tells us what to do, and I think if we can just get back to core county services based on the fact that Clackamas County is a statutory county, we are not a home rule county, and many people find that difficult to understand the difference. Commissioners, before we leave tonight, I must brief you on something. We have said that we're going to move the short-term rental hearing to September 7th. However, there is scheduling difficulties for the entire month of September if you think you want to make any drastic changes. At recess, Gary Schmidt said he's going to offer this up for discussion on August 16th, and Stephen Magcor has informed me from a penmanship, a creation point of view from our county council's office, if we make a lot of changes, we will not be able to pass it on September 7th. So I suggest any corrections, additions, or subtractions you want to make, be very brief. I've looked ahead at the calendar. As you know, that's what I do. I set the agenda. I've looked for the entire month of September. Not all commissioners are here on the business meetings for the month of September. There are five of them, except for September 7th. If you do not want to participate in the short-term rental ordinance going forward, then I can go ahead and have the meeting without you, or we could hold it over to sometime in October. So what I'm saying, being very brief, is next week, on August 16th, I suggest we be quite judicious in what we want to do with the short-term rentals. If not, then we may not visit it for another month and a half because, as you know, fair is next week. We do opening ceremonies. It's very important to our community. The last two weeks in August, this board is on their yearly recess, followed by Labor Day, and so the calendar is up against us. I would just like to say. Yes, I appreciate everybody's comments tonight, and of course, I support the Declaration of Independence, and why wouldn't I? Seeing no further business before this commission, we are adjourned.